Good evening. We call the, where's my, there she is. With my right hand. We call the meeting of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners to order. Good to see everyone. Thank you for coming. Mr. Mosley has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Do I see Patrick? See? I hear you. Okay. He's on the way. Thank you all so much for coming. This is our regular meeting. First Tuesday, six o'clock. We also meet the third Thursday, five o'clock. And of course, our meetings are live streamed, so you are welcome to take advantage of those opportunities. While I'm thinking about it, let me go ahead and tell those who are in the audience of the live stream. If you haven't voted, you got 58 minutes. By that clock on the wall, you know, to get in, I hope you would go and exercise your right to vote. We have some very important, how do I say, things, for lack of a better word, on the ballot this time. They're very important to the future and progress of Liberty County. So I wish you would participate in that effort. Thank you so much for considering doing that. Go to your precincts and make your voice heard and your vote count. Thank you so much for that opportunity. At this time, we have the, some people say the better half, we have Kathy Page, who's coming tonight to lead us in our invocation. Would you please stand for our invocation and our pledge of allegiance by Mr. Kathy Page, a radio personality in Heinzville, Liberty County?
Yes, 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 yes. Good evening. Our Father and our God, oh, how grateful we are, Lord, that you have allowed us to gather in this place corporately. Lord, we lift up the Board of Commissioners before you tonight. We thank you for the wisdom, for the knowledge that you've given to them to come together to discuss the affairs of our county. God, we thank you so much for moving in this room upon each and every item that is on the agenda tonight. And Father, we want to lift up our community that's being affected by this shutdown right now. We lift up the soldiers to you. We lift up the personnel, the staff. God, everyone that needs a touch from you in this hour. We're so grateful for what's going to transpire in this meeting, and we thank you for using Chairman Lovett to lead us in it. In Jesus' name, we pray and give you praise. Amen and amen. Our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we all know why you are a radio personality. Good to have you. This time, Commissioner Gillis wants to give us an update on Commissioner Walden. Many of us know that he has not been able to attend a few of our meetings. So if you will let us know how he's doing, we appreciate it, Commissioner Gillis.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thanks. Good evening, everyone. Eddie, as some of you may know, had surgery a couple of weeks ago now, and he's still recovering ever since the surgery, and the surgery was successful. He's still in the hospital up in the Atlanta area, and he, I've been texting his wife and talking to his children. And yesterday, to my surprise, he called, and you know, I talked with him for about 10 minutes, and he's, he's doing well. He's still Eddie, if y'all know what I'm talking about. He's doing well and, you know, asking about county business and a few other things, and just, just recovering slowly. He's still got a good while before he's back up here with us, but it's that you continue to keep him and his family in prayer, but all is well.
Thank you, Commissioner Gillis. We are praying for our friend and our brother, his recovery. All right. Commissioners, our agenda calls for the approval of our minutes from the month of October. Can you believe how the years is flying by?
Yes, it is.
October minutes will require our approval.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve the minutes of October 2nd and 16th. Any further discussion? All in favor, show of hands, please. Any opposition? Minutes are approved. Thank you. Recognition, recognition of Chief Assessor Keith Payne. How are you, sir?
Doing well. How are you doing today?
Very well, thank you. Your board chair is going to come in.
Speak first.
Come on, Ballot Board Chair. Good to see, good to see you and the members of your board. You want your board members to stand while you do this, or?
I think that's a good idea. Our other two board members, we have two board members who are unable to attend. They had other things going on tonight. But these are our other two board members, and, you know, they do a great job, I have to say. They were, they do a great job.
They can stand there, whichever board member, whatever your pleasure. For the whole wide world and see you.
By the way, I'm Lee Steele. I'm the chairperson of the Board of Assessors. And I just want to say Keith is, has been with us about a year, and so far, so good. We vow counting where we want it. No pressure. Basically, on behalf of the Liberty County Board of Assessors, which is us, of course, it's my privilege to recognize Mr. Keith Payne. He's our chief appraiser for his exceptional professional accomplishments. Mr. Payne has recently earned two of the highest professional designations in the property assessment field, and that is not easy to do. Let me tell you, there's a lot of studying and tests to go through. The Georgia Certified Appraiser, GCA, from the Georgia Association of Assessing Officials, and the Assessment Administration Specialist, which is AAS, from the International Association of Assessing Officers. The AAS designation attained by fewer than 10% of all IAAO international members represents one of the highest honors I profession can bestow. And like I said, it's not easy to get. Now, we are lucky tonight because we have two members to come present the award. One is Bobby Fisher, and he is president of the double GA, G double A O, sorry about that. And you want to bring up Mr. Bishop as well, please? He's the chief appraiser of Camden County, vice president of the G double A O, and this gentleman's from Statesboro, Bullock County. So if you will step forward and lock yourself up.
Let them to the sweet land of liberty.
That's right. So, good evening, and I appreciate Keith for inviting me down here to present this award. The GCA and the AAS designations, as Chairman Steele said, are amongst the highest designations that our profession offers. The GCA designation is our statewide professional designation achieved by, Keith will be the 42nd in the nearly 60 years that this designation has been offered. There's currently, I think, 11 active members of the organization that hold this designation. The chief appraisers of all three of the largest metro counties, DeKalb, Fulton, and Cobb, hold this designation. So Keith is joining a very esteemed rank of chief appraisers in the state. So it's my honor to present this certificate of designation to Mr. Keith Payne on behalf of the 1,500 members of the Georgia Association of Assessing Officials. So congratulations, Keith.
Thank you. I have a few words.
You deserve a few words, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Chairman, Commissioners. I'm truly honored by this recognition and proud to serve Liberty County in this capacity. Earning the Georgia Certified Assessor Appraiser and Assessment Administration Specialist designation has been both a professional goal and a personal milestone. These achievements represent one of the highest levels of accomplishment in our field and a continued commitment to professional excellence. They also reflect not just individual effort, but the support and collaboration of an outstanding team. I want to thank our Liberty County Board of Assessors, my staff in the appraisal department, and mentors who've guided me along my way. Together, we will continue to uphold fairness, transparency, and professionalism in every aspect of our work, serving the citizens of Liberty County with integrity and pride. Thank you again for this honor.
If it's your desire, we'll provide for you a photo op, sir.
Yeah, I definitely want to get a photo op.
Those gentlemen on your board will come, if you would. Congratulations to you and that achievement, and to what your staff does every day for Liberty County. My board chair. And your association.
How are we doing?
We're good.
We're bad.
Okay, I can see everybody now.
Okay, good.
Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. And one, two, three. All right, we got everybody.
One more round of applause. It's certainly a blessing to have someone of that caliber on our staff here in Liberty County. I'm reminded, though, I saw posted somewhere, a young lady is now the county commissioner, achieving, but it's one for Liberty County. A young lady from Liberty College and Career Academy is the Career Academy Student of the Year. She's right here from Liberty County, Georgia. So you know that makes us feel Liberty County proud. So Keith, thank you for your contribution.
Thank you.
No over business. Amendment to the county's retirement plan, Mr. Mosley.
Chairman. Members of the commission, I have before you an amendment to the county's personnel policy that will basically allow executive team members, as well as the members of the two, the three boards, to be vested early without having to go through the five-year period. We deem this as a recruitment tool. And they're only, out of the people that will be affected, we're talking about five individuals. And this would be no additional funds expended for the county.
Our commissioners, we discussed it at, before the work session, at the work session, and it was presented for us for our approval. Are there any questions for Mr. Mosley?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I've had several questions. I've contacted several entities in and around the community and the ACCG staff that came at our last board meeting. I'm concerned of the cost. You know, Mr. Mosley, you said there would be no cost, but...
No extra cost.
I don't, it will cost the county, and that's my concern. My biggest concern is the cost, that it will. Because we got 17 that this will eventually come onto the new plan. We've got five now.
Yes, ma'am.
But right in your, in, I think, Ms. Swanson that came.
Yes, Swanson.
She mentioned that the, right now, it take, we're five years vested.
Yes, ma'am.
They leave in two years. They only take what they put into the retirement plan, which is two and a half percent. The other two and a half percent that they do not get goes into that.
The pool.
Goes into the pool, which will offset the county's 2.5% going forward.
Right.
So it will cost the county. I don't see how it cannot. I know it may be a recruitment tool, but I don't think it's a retention tool. And that's why we have it in place the way it is now, because we had problems retaining our employees. And at one time, Liberty County's salary scale was not level to where it should be. And a lot of our employees stayed with us because of the retirement plan. So it was retention, not recruitment. Also, that Ms. Swanson said there was only one county in the region that she represents that has this type of plan. And there's 159 counties. And the rest of them that I talked to, now, I didn't talk to all the counties, but other entities, the city, they have retirements, but most all of them are five years retention. I don't know that I could personally support it, because I do believe it will cost the county. And we have issues, you know, with a higher than other places millage rate that will be going out soon. I believe I would put any of the employees we currently have in Liberty County up against any other county of employees. We got the best right here. And I believe that, you know, the retention is what is going to get us there. We have five now that have taken these places. Out of 17, we have five that would qualify to go under the new plan. I would think it would take three to five years. They may come in with their expertise, but to get them settled into the position they have, whether it be Liberty County or another county, do they see how we do things here?
That's true.
And how they have to get along and get out in the community and see how everything works around here. We're not a Gwinnett County, you know. We're not there yet. But I'm really concerned about the cost, though.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
And that's mine.
Mr. Chair, one of the things that I paid, I didn't, I looked at it the other night, but it didn't ring a bell, but now it does. We've got these department heads, but you don't have the second-in-command involved, but in just one spot, one position. Why couldn't we have not looked at all of the department heads and at least the second-in-command?
When we looked at it, Commissioner, we did consider the second-in-hand, but the key here was that you would reward those, or not reward, but you would recognize those who were at department head level, and that if those individuals were promoted, then they could have that opportunity. But again, this is for, again, for those who don't have the five years, and in a lot of cases, your seconds would have been vested.
And also, I think the lady said that if we wanted to, we could go back and revise it for elected officials?
She did. Yes, sir. And that is, that is something y'all could do.
That's for like all of the constitutional officers, right?
Most of, as we've discussed, most of the constitutional officers are already in different investment plans. Yes, ma'am.
I have another question this time. Mr. Mosley?
Yes, ma'am.
Cut my mic back on. Under these 17 that you have here, I hate to do it, but one of them is county administrator.
Yes, ma'am.
She said that contracts, contracted employees did not qualify under this plan, and you're under a contract.
Right, but I'm vested already.
But still, if another one comes in, I guess we would have to tell them. I don't know. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not for this.
If another one came in and he wasn't in the contract.
Then he wouldn't be contracted. Mr. Brown was with us so long, he wasn't a contracted employee. I just need to make that clear.
That's all right. No offense taken.
That's true.
Listen, so is it, well, I guess to hear from everybody, I was going to say, is it further information we need, or?
No, sir. We've had it before three times. I think we need to take action.
You want to look at the elected official part?
No, sir. I don't, I don't, I need to look at budgets, you know, and I know by looking at the budget and the military rate and the tax digest already that we can't afford it.
I say let's lay it aside and come back at it later.
For now, I make a motion that we, if we table it, we're going to have to set a date for it to come back and look at it. And the cost is just going up.
You actually can table it until next year, if you want.
Look at it three times. I'm ready to vote.
I'm just trying to give you options.
No, sir. I've done looked. I've explored. I've called, and I, and she came. I've talked to her at ACCG meeting. Retention, retention, and Liberty County's got the best right now. I make a motion, we deny the request for the amendment to the retirement plan.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion is second that we deny the request at this time. Any further discussion? All in favor? Show of hands, please. All right, the chair's going to have to stand. The motion is, the amendment is denied. Variance request, Mr. Ricketson.
Evening, Chairman Lovett, members of the board.
Hello, sir.
Tonight, we have a holdover from the last meeting. You tabled this variance request and asked that we bring it back tonight. So if you'd like, I can go through this and kind of refresh your memory, since you've slept 30 times since that time. This is a variance request that's been submitted by the owners. Jack and Beatrice tell us to have an accessory building in the front yard setback. The ordinance requires all accessory buildings and residential areas to be in the, in the, either the side yard or the rear yard. And this one has clearly been built in the front yard pursuant to this section. That's the section 302B of the UDA. Pursuant to this section, that's the section 302B of the UDO, accessory structures have to be located in the side or rear yard. The 1.1 acre parcel is located on 31 Shavetown Lane in unincorporated Liberty County. And you can see there the tax map parcel number. Here's the sign and the ad in the Coastal Courier. And this is the vicinity map. You can see this is on Coastal Highway, this is Shavetown Road. This property fronts on Coastal Highway and Shavetown Road, but the front, as defined by the UDO, is Shavetown Road. So the, this, the accessory building is located in the front yard facing Shavetown Road. And this is just a close-up view, Shavetown Road, Coastal Highway, the home is right here, and the building is just slightly to the, in the front yard of the home. And the zoning map here, you can see that this property is zoned AR1. And you can see the flood map there, this property is not in the flood plain. And the wetlands, just the very bottom corner of the property there is in the flood plain. And this is the narrative, they're just simple and sweet. I'm applying for a side yard variance for the 12 by 24, that they be placed in the front yard setback. And this is a survey of the property that shows you where Shavetown Road is, and this is the rest of the property. The house is located here, the building is located about right here. And that makes it easy for you. There's the house, there's the building. You got two driveways, one off of Highway 17 and one off of Shavetown Road. And the septic system is located over here between the house and Highway 17. And you can see there a picture of the, the home, and the building is located just to the, just slightly to the front, in the front yard of the home. And this is a, another view of the, of the property. You can see the relationship of the home to the, to the building. And this is just looking at the rear yard behind the home. And you can see that property falls off a good bit immediately behind the home. And you can see there, it just kind of indicates the slope again, how the, how the property falls off behind the home. And this is looking, looking back toward midway on Highway 17. Variance criteria, they're extraordinary. We have to look at six different things. They're extraordinary, exceptional conditions pertaining to the size of the subject property in question because of its size, shape, or topography. We answered that question, no. While the property does have a slight slope in the backyard, this was created when the field was brought in to level the lot for the home. Number two, such conditions are peculiar to this subject property. We, we claim there that there's no peculiar condition about the property. Number three, the application of the ordinance to the subject property would create an unnecessary hardship. And we concluded there that more field could be brought in to create a level area in the rear yard to put the building or a smaller building in the rear yard. Number four, relief, if granted, would not cause substantial detriment to the public good or impair the purposes and intent of this ordinance. We concluded there, there would not be a detriment to the public good if you granted this variance. Number five, relief, if granted, will represent the minimum variance that will afford relief and will represent the least deviation possible from the ordinance. And our answer, there was no, a smaller accessory building could be put on the property, which could meet the intent of the ordinance. LCPC heard this at their September meeting, and they recommended disapproval. The board agreed with the staff of recommendation of disapproval for this variance. Per the current accessory building regulations, however, Planning Commission put a special condition, which I'm telling you, I told you last time, I'm telling you this time, that the Board of Commissioners consider the, the character of the area when making this final decision, because it is a rural area, and there are other, other accessory buildings in the immediate area that are either, either in or, or near the front yard. So that's the recommendation of the Board, Board of, of the Planning Commission, disapproval with that caveat. So I'd be glad to answer any questions. We also, as you requested, we have the Building and Licensing Department here, and also the applicants are here again. So I'd be glad to...
If I remember correctly, I'm reading what the minutes said, said, I asked you, you, Mr. Mosley, to speak with Judge McGirt, did I do that?
This did go to Judge McGirt. I, I attended that hearing, as, as did the Building and Licensing people. And the reason for that was the building was started without a permit.
Okay, all right, all right. But...
They're going to address that presentation.
Yeah, okay, all right, well, building and license, let's, petition, we've heard your, well, petition, has anything changed from your request since last time? Everything still the same?
Sir.
Is it, has anything changed from your request from the last time? Your request is still the same?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, let's hear from Building and License. Because we were told that, if I remember correctly, that there was not a stop work order.
This is, there was not actually a stop work order. There was a, a violation letter sent to the, the Tollises.
But don't let me interrupt your presentation if you want to.
Okay. This started way back in November, actually, when the mobile home was put on the property. And then in December, we did a, had to get a corrected plot plan on the property, because they had decided they wanted to move their mobile home to a different spot on the lot. So that changed the plot plan, so that changed a little bit. I think we have a slide program, Clint. Okay, right here. If you'll, if you'll go through. Is it right here? Okay, here we go. Okay, let's see if it'll work. Well, I can't read that. I can just read it from here, it'd be a lot better. On, we did a final mobile home inspection on December 17th, and there was no building other than the mobile home on the property. I did that inspection myself. On or around, somewhere around the 24th to the 29th of December, it was noticed by our code enforcement that there was a storage building placed on the property. So they did not have a permit for that first building. So we reached out to the mobile home company, because they deliver storage buildings also, and told them that they needed to get a permit. So they came in, the Tollises did come in, and, and that was on January 6th of this year. And they got a permit for the first building that was there. Okay, so again, after that was done, February 25th, it was almost two months later, we go back out there to check the, the progress of that building. And they're building another building beside that one, without a permit for that one. So they are in violation again of building a new building on the property without a permit, and it's in the front yard also. So sometime after that, the other building got removed. Let's see, now I might be able to read the next thing, if you can go through it, Clint. Okay, that's the permit that was issued for the first building. Okay, that was an after-the-fact permit. And that, that right there is a zoning approval letter, and I think y'all have this in your packet, showing them, go back to that other one, Clint, brother. In the purple that's highlighted, telling them that they had to put the building in the rear of the property. And this was after the fact, okay? All right, go to the next one, Clint. So when they came in, they brought, they did this plot plan right here, showing where they were going to move that first building. You see it over there in the yellow? That would have been legal. But they never did that, and they started building a new building without the permit. Okay, so a letter, a certified letter was sent again, explaining they were in violation of putting a building there without a permit. And it was signed for May 20, 21st, and signed for. So somewhere between that time, they came into the office, and about the certified letter, they was verbally told not to build anymore on that new building. Stop, don't do it no more. Well, they continued, because now the building is pretty much finished. And so we turned it over to the magistrate court. That's our, that's our out, that's where we go to with violations. It ends up in magistrate court. Well, it goes to magistrate court, and then they decide that they want to do a variance after the fact. So they've done their applicant, I can't see that up there. I'd just rather talk to you about it. And, and that's where we're at. The magistrate court put it off until they heard from you. They were waiting to hear what you did with the variance before, before they did anything else. But regardless, they're still in violation for the second building. And it's not the first time we've dealt with this about buildings with them without permits. So that's where we're at. Do you have any questions for me? I'll try to give you the best answers I can.
Mr. Ma, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Any of these slabs on, I mean, any of these buildings on concrete slab?
No, sir.
They're not?
No, sir. The first one is gone. Now they, I guess they had that removed. The second one, I think, is on block, but no, it's not on a slab.
Okay, all right.
Tony, they're in violation of the second building, because they haven't paid a permit.
That's right.
Paid, paid the price for that.
That's right.
And it's in the wrong location.
That's right. It's, it's, it's right beside where the other one was.
They were told to stop.
Yes.
They need to move forward with this, and I've rode by, seen it, it's almost in a finished state, other than maybe some paint.
That's right.
From what I could tell. Condolite, they meant they was going to build it, didn't care what nobody said.
Regardless.
Mr. Chair, I, I just have two quick questions.
Okay.
So looking at this drawing from the plot plan.
Yes.
You were saying, in the yellow highlighted area.
Yes.
They could put it there.
They could put it there. And it would have been legal, because that's in the side or to the rear.
Okay.
Yes, it would have been perfectly, and that's where they said they were going to move the first building to. But they never did. And then they started building another one right beside the other one.
Okay. And then I guess the second question is hypothetically speaking, if they never would have came and, and got a permit, and they built it, what, what would happen?
Well, if, if it wasn't caught, and it would just be there like all these other buildings that get, but when you catch it.
Right.
We, we take them to magistrate court.
Okay.
That's, that is our avenue. We don't have a fine system with our county. Our, our avenue is take you to magistrate court, and Judge McGirt will set fines. And then he will also instruct you, you have to move it.
Okay.
So that's where we're at.
All right. Tony, looking at this drawing outside of this square, to the, to the right, or which would be to the east of this drawing, that's US 17.
That's 17 out on that end.
Okay, and, and the house is kind of in the center of the, the upper part? And they want to put a building where it's highlighted in yellow?
That's, that was their drawing where they were going to move the first original building. And I'm going to show you up here, because it's a lot easier. This, this was the first building where they were going to, it's back here, it's like, it was here.
Mm-hmm.
So when they came in, and we told them they couldn't put it there, they drew this plot plan, saying that they will move it over here. And it would have been perfectly legal, and that would have been the end of it. But they never did that. They started building another one right next to it, in the, in the wrong place.
With, and around, around that square again, the adjacent property owners, is there, they're just out in the middle by the...
There's none.
It's just them?
They border 17, and there's property owner, owners to this side of them, there's nothing to the back of them.
Right, I know it's property owners, but is there, any kind of development, does someone else have a mobile home?
No.
It's just, it's just them out there?
Just to the left of them, there's more people in there, there is.
What would the distance be to where the next family lives?
I think there's... Yeah, something like that.
But we, we found this during our travels.
Yes.
No, no one called from surrounding areas and complained about it?
No, what happened was, is we've had, we had an issue with the mobile home. It was moved there, and then they had to remove it and had to do another plot plan. So we, we kind of had our eyes on that property and what was going on. And our code enforcement saw the building there. So of course, when we see something, you know, we try to handle it, or we handle on a, on a complaint. But when we know something's wrong, we try to handle that. That's been, you know, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to, you know, be more consistent in what we do.
I understand that. And I guess the, the other question would be for Mr. Ricketson from the Planning Commission. Jeff, you said that they, the Planning Commission voted to disapprove. And in your narrative, you said that for us to take into consideration the characteristics of the area? Yeah, well, when y'all voted, did, did y'all take into consideration the characteristics?
Well, no, the, the staff took into consideration what the UDO says. It says, it says accessory buildings have to be in the side or the rear yard. The Planning Commission had some empathy for the applicants, because they can't, came in and said, you know, our, our septic tank greenfield's in the rear, and there's other people up and down the road that have buildings in the front yard, so will you make this exception? So the, the Planning Commission felt like they were going to put it on y'all, just like the magistrate.
Well, yeah, which, which is what I'm saying. I mean, you know, they, they voted down, and then they say, but hey, if y'all want to do something different, please consider the characteristics, which, I mean, seem like to me, they, they should have considered the characteristics. I mean, and, and we going to consider the characteristics, and, and we going to vote? I mean, you know, that, that's what we do, but just found that, I don't know if they, don't quite understand that, that part of it.
I think they feel like you have more discretion than they have. So they, they felt like they needed to kind of stick with the ordinance, and they felt like you had more discretion than they did.
They didn't want to draw the hard line in the sand.
Right.
I'll see it.
Mr. Chair. I, I guess to, to the owners, I mean, man, we've been talking about this storage unit without a respect. I mean, we're talking about a storage unit. Is there any way possible you all could just move it in that little yellow square? Are y'all willing to do that?
I need to come to the mic.
Please, if you could come to the mic. Is it without respect, is this a yes or no?
As I said before, the building is on four by 12 blocks, sitting on the building, anchored to the ground.
Right.
We don't have no skids under it. Like the other building, the first building that came had skids on it where we could slide it. And we would have dismantled it, totally. We, we got $6,000 in the building. And I would like to answer your question, we can't move it unless we dismantle it all, altogether. One of the questions, he said we didn't have a building permit, but we got, showing that we paid for a building permit that was never issued, so we'd like to somebody answer where that money went, that $400 went, if the permit was not issued.
From, from my recollection, I, he's right there.
And I got the receipt showing we paid for it.
Right, I, I, I think we, we spoke about that previously. That was for the other...
First building.
First building.
Number one, that, that home center moved in.
Yeah, home center.
Right.
But...
It's just the second one.
So, so again, sir, I, I guess my question is, are you all willing to, to build in that area, the yellow square?
Yes, sir, I mean, we can do that, if, if it's feasible, and if y'all vote for to do that, we can do that. But we'd have to tear the other building down, right?
I mean...
That's not, that's not our calls.
Yeah. I mean, without a respect, just, just looking at, from I guess the communication, prior, previous communication, in that they have told you all to stop building. And then also, who, who drew this?
Comment on what you said, they stopped, we was never told orally or by letter. The only time we remembered saying to stop building is when we went to court, the first time, which was in August. We was ordered to stop building then. That's the only time we ever had any compensation.
That's fine. So, so whenever you went to court and they told you to stop, did you stop?
Well, sure, we didn't build anything, we hadn't done anything to that building.
Right, I guess, one, one more question, and then we can, we can move on for a vote. This particular drawing of this plot plan, who, who drew this?
Oh, you mean, yeah, we did.
You did?
Yeah.
So you drew it?
Yes, sir.
You drew that square where you said the storage was going to be at?
The trailer, the mobile home. We drew where the mobile home was going to be put.
So, so who drew the, the highlighted yellow area?
We didn't do it. They did it, I guess.
Absolutely not.
So I don't know who drew that. Let's say it was Hinesville Home Center, I mean...
So, so, so you're saying you drew just the portion where it says the house on that?
Yes, sir, the mobile home itself, we drew that out. And, but we didn't...
And you drew the, where it says woods, and you drew where it says Highway US 17?
Yes.
You did all of that?
Yes, sir. And we didn't know that the land dropped off at the back, because we were never told.
Right, so sir, so the little circle where it says well, you drew that too?
Right there, yes.
So you drew where it says driveway as well, but you didn't draw where it says storage?
Yes, sir. That yellow, we did not draw that on there. I don't know who highlighted that, to do that on, let's say it was Hinesville Home Center.
All right, thank you. Y'all ready to vote?
We use the commissioner from that district.
Yeah, and, thank you, sir. And I make a motion that we not give the variance and everything, and they... And they just have to, they have to relocate the shed, tear it down wherever they got to.
Second, second.
All the evidence says that they will probably get notified. They were notified not to build. So I make a motion to wish, deny the variance.
Motion and a second that we, uh, really approve the recommendation of, uh, of, you know, L C P C, of, of, of disapproval. And just let me make a comment. Uh, sir, uh, the, that's kinda where Commissioner Frazier was leading. There's a lot of, um, non-compliance that, that comes to mind. Um, while there may be similar character situations in the area, most of those things happen before ordinance. So they've been there historically. But, but we operating now on the ordinance that does not allow this without a variance request. Um, so if, if we as a commission just openly allow that to happen all over the county, we'll be a hodgepodge county, you know? And we're trying not to bring that to Liberty County. We can't go back to fix what's been done. I know you said you saw that in the area. I understand that. But that's before the ordinance that we have now. But from this point moving on, and then when a judge says stop, even, uh, when the county staff says stop, stop, you know, like we tell you, people don't, don't fight, you know, on the side of the road, don't fight with a police officer, go to court, you know? So when, when someone advises a citizen, not just picking on you, just stop, stop and come get it resolved. But if you keep building and keep adding on, then that's just, that, that shows disrespect for those whose jobs there are to help to maintain the ordinance that Liberty County has to abide by. Now, are they all perfect? No, sir, I'm not saying that. I'm saying, but we have those on the books for a reason. So that's kinda what I see here as, as you speak to us. But we're not picking on you, uh, Ms. Tullis. Um, but we do have to, you know, that's why we had our staff come in and then I, I had forgotten about the, I don't remember, the, the Judge McGirt piece. So, so he was waiting on us to see what we were gonna, what we're gonna do. Um, but, uh, you've heard from us and heard from the commissioner in that district that, that, uh, we, uh, find the need to disapprove this request, this variance request. So we wish you the best in, in having that, uh, uh, shed moved as, as best you can.
Well, one more thing. Uh.
Yeah.
When we went to court, like I said.
Thank you.
That was the only time that we were ever informed to put a stop order on the building. And we did at that time. So I'm gonna rebut what you said because that's what happened. And I'm not gonna lie about that. We didn't receive no letters. We didn't, no information or oral reports or nothing about the building. It was stopped when we went to court in August. So regardless of what anybody says, that's my opinion.
Yes, sir, and you have that right.
All in favor of the disapproval? Show your hands, please. All right. Will you now simply vote disapprove the, uh, to approve the disapproval from L C P C? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Tullis.
Mr. Chair, he does have the option to, to go back and do it right, the right.
Yes, yes. I mean, you, you made that very clear.
Yeah. Well, Mr. Chairman, he, he did say that he had a receipt for some, for four hundred dollars, something that was paid.
That was the, the first.
The first.
First building.
Yeah.
They're non-transferable.
Yeah, the one that was. All right, Mr. Rickerson, first reading, Mr. Flood Plane Ordinance. Um, this, uh, if I can do it justice, this conversation came about as a result of what happened to Liberty County in August primarily. And no less what happened when Helene came through here and showed so many weak spots when it comes to drainage in Liberty County. I say weak spots. Now, there are some places which have been identified, the commission still talking about it, where people just built in low places. Ladies and gentlemen, if you're listening to me, don't build your house in a low spot. When the heavy rains come, that rain is gonna find ya. And then what happens when it happens? You call us.
Yeah. Yeah.
Don't build your houses in these, Liberty County is a coastal county. We've got lots of low areas. The land may be cheap, but it's not good.
Not good land.
We say it's cheap for a reason.
Yeah, it's cheap for a reason. Yeah. So don't build your houses. So we're trying to help with this. This is our start to, to, to address this. Uh, so Mr. Rickerson, if you will, uh, present, please.
Thank you, Chairman. That was a great lead in. Um, the Liberty County has had a flood plain ordinance, uh, for forty years. You adopted it in nineteen eighty-seven and you adopted pretty much the model ordinance that's put out by FEMA. FEMA is the federal ordinance, federal agency that underwrites, uh, flood insurance. And that's why people in Liberty County are able to buy insurance because you have a flood protection ordinance. Uh, now this model ordinance, uh, which is pretty much largely as you adopted it back in eighty-seven, uh, does have, uh, FEMA does allow for, uh, some discretion, local discretion. If you want to require, uh, homes to be built higher than the flood plain, uh, you currently require them to be a foot higher than the flood plain. What's proposed, what you've discussed and you ask us to draw up, is requiring them to be two feet above the flood plain. So like if this is the flood plain out there and the, the land you were talking about just now, currently you require, uh, the, the finished floor to be this high, you're proposing doubling that to make that two feet above the flood plain. And, you know, during the drought season, uh, that might be considered a burden, but when it's flooding, uh, that's, that's a blessing. So it's, uh, it, it kinda has two sides to it, but, uh, cause there is a little bit more cost in raising that flood, that floor. But when, when it's flooding time, uh, it, it really pays off. And, uh, you talked about the storms last year. The biggest storm that I remember was Hurricane Debbie, which was the one, it was the wet one. It wasn't a destructive one like we had with L A. But I rode around Heinzville and we had some flooding in the streets, but we didn't have any flooding in the structures. And I think that's largely due to the fact that we do require that flood, that free board. Uh, I think some of you went out during the most recent times and you saw that flooding was getting a little bit too close to the, to the floor, finished floor. So that's where this came from to, uh, suggest to change the ordinance to require the free board to be two feet instead of just one feet. So what we've done is we've take this, we've taken this ordinance and every place where you had one foot, uh, elevation for, uh, new construction, any new residential construction or, uh, non-residential construction. And in addition to that, in mobile homes, uh, any, any, any place where people are going to be dwelling or, um, where people are gonna be living or working, you're, uh, we're, we're changing or you're, you're, you're suggesting that we, uh, change from one feet to two feet, uh, just to, just to raise that floor up one additional foot to, to, to provide some additional insurance that people, people's structures won't get flooded. So that's what we've done. And pretty much, uh, this is the model ordinance that FEMA puts out. But they do allow for you to, you have the option to make this, this, this be one feet above the flood, the flood plain or whatever you want it to be. So, uh, what's been suggested is that we change that to two feet. So we've gone through the entire ordinance and everywhere there's a, there's a one foot, uh, requirement above the flood plain, we've changed that to two feet. So this is first reading. Uh, I, I think you asked us to bring it to you tonight for first reading and you wanted to consider it again at your next meeting for a, for final action. So I'd be glad to answer any questions about this proposal.
We have been thinking about this on commissioners and then I heard on TV that Cedar Savannah was doing something similar to this. So I said, well, and for the same reason, well, Savannah has it worse than we do, uh, uh, for the same reasons. So I thought, let's, let's at least talk about this and maybe put this into effect. Um, I mean, out, outside of, uh, uh, deferring the phone calls, just a good thing to do. Uh, and I know there's a lot of people who move to Liberty County. They don't know a wetland from, you know, they just buy.
No.
They just buy and they build and then they, then they get caught. But the phone calls come to us.
Right.
So we're trying to help you to help yourself. That's what we got. Any, any questions for Mr. Rickerson? Thoughts?
It's just the first reading, but.
Yeah, Chairman. Yeah. Will you take this to the other municipalities? Uh, well, this was just state rural area.
This is just for the unincorporated area of Liberty County, but you, 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 you'll be setting a precedent here so some of the other cities might follow suit. It, it is common.
Just, just so everybody's clear, this is mostly gonna affect what we call stick-built homes and everything. Mobile homes already come about three foot off the ground.
Right.
Block them up.
Right.
So they'll probably still do their same thing.
Right.
Other than just me can recommend, please put as much field dirt under your mobile home where you don't have this issue and everything. Um, because we are in a lower lying county. Um, most of it's gonna affect stick-built homes.
That's right.
These rolling homes, mobile homes, cause I mean, people's gonna be asking questions. I'm just trying to make it clear. It's gonna, pretty well, it's gonna affect stick-built homes.
If it's a stick-built home and they're building it on a slab, that builder's gonna have to bring in some additional dirt to raise that, raise that building pad up so the slab will be higher than it currently is.
That's right. Yeah. Block foundation, monolithic, whatever it may be.
Right.
You might have to raise it up.
That's right.
You know, let me, I may need Kelly Davis here. Uh, we, we have some, um, I use the term developers in the area who are locating.
Mobile homes.
Mobile homes in the low-lying areas. And we don't know yet what we can do about it, but we put them on notice that, that this can't continue. Because once again, the same thing happened. Once that, uh, a mobile home is sold and they walk away. And, and when those heavy rains come, they're calling.
They're calling us, yeah.
So I'm not sure yet what the action's gonna be, but just put them on notice that we are taking notice of that. And, and this is a start, you know, to help our homeowners, but, but we're also looking at what we might be able to do to prevent that from becoming something that happens, uh, more prevalent. It's happening now, uh, too much for me, you know? Uh, but we don't, we're not gonna sit by and just let that happen without trying to do something to prevent that. So y'all may need Kelly to get me out of something, but, but, uh, we're gonna put those folk on notice that this can't continue. Once again, to unsuspecting homeowners. All right. So we'll bring this back, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you. We appreciate you.
Ms. Erica, thank you for coming. Uh, she presented to us, ladies and gentlemen, about this, uh, technology and our work sessions. So she, well, we asking her tonight to give the, what's that thing they do in, in college when they're writing papers? What, the kind of version you call that?
AI?
You want a, a briefing, a briefing.
Yes, yes. If you will, please, ma'am. And, and the lead in, uh, I'm proud to say that, uh, I hope you, that Liberty County's, the technology that we have now is conducive to where we need to go with the next gen. So we're, we're, we're in good shape. But just for awareness, um, Liberty County here, this, uh, we are moving in this direction because of the technology we have, uh, some people have, is gonna be totally outdated. Uh, but that will be, it's done at a cost.
Right.
So there's a cost somewhere.
Right.
Just to know what that is.
Right. Um, good afternoon. I'm gonna kinda fly through this just to give a quick briefing. Um, our current nine-one-one system is an enhanced nine-one-one system using the copper lines, which is a nineteen seventies technology built for landlines. And while it's been reliable for decades, it's now reaching the end of its useful life and is also incompatible with how most of our citizens communicate today. Uh, over eighty percent of our nine-one-one calls come from mobile devices, yet our legacy system struggles with two critical issues. That's location accuracy and media limita, media limitation because our legacy system is voice only. Meaning we can't get, um, photos and videos, which can be vital in an emergency. The solution is Next Gen nine-one-one, which will bring our emergency response capabilities into the twenty-first century. Next Gen nine-one-one is a secure nationwide internet protocol-based emergency communication system, which will replace the analog, uh, nine-one-one infrastructure that we currently have. Um, I kinda think of it as moving from AOL dial-up services to a more modern broadband network such as a fiber network. The two key components for Next Gen will be emergency services IP network, which is called ESI net. Uh, this is a high-speed data network backbone that'll replace all the old copper circuits, uh, and connect all the public safety answering points or P S apps, nine-one-one centers in Georgia, which G I C A, our, our communications authority, is working on coordinating that and managing the statewide system. The other key component is Next Gen core services. And these would be our software functions that handle the capabilities such as location validation and routing nine-one-one calls based on G I S. Some of the, um, differences between Next Gen nine-one-one versus our legacy system, call routing currently based on tower sectors, often large sectors, uh, Next Gen will be based on highly accurate map coordinates. Right now, we receive voice only. We can get text, but you have to buy, um, different, uh, software to receive that. Next Gen would allow us to receive voice, text, messages, photos, live video, and send those to the, um, people on scene in, in the field. System resiliency, right now we have a centralized circuit switch that's prone to failure. And with Next Gen, we'll be able to automatically and seamlessly reroute our calls to an adjacent P S app if needed. Uh, and interoperability, same thing, difficult, slow to transfer information. If I have information to give to Long County, I have to call them and give it out. Versus with Next Gen, if I send everything, they get it all. They get all the information without me having to relay it, give a phone number and then call the person back.
For the sake of the audience, tell them the value of being able to do a text or photo or video to the map.
So that would add value. There is often times when, uh, someone calls and they're, they're telling us what they see. We ask the questions that we think may need to be asked. We relay that. It's kinda like a game of telephone. But by the time we give it out to the offices over the air, something could have changed. We may not have asked the right question. It may come across differently. Being able to send a picture of exactly what's happening to that officer, he can see everything he needs to see right there for himself, for the fire department, uh, for safety reasons, anything they need to see. We can send that directly to them. They can then ask us questions. Hey, can you ask them, you know, A B C and we can get that answer for them.
And if I'm not able to speak, I might be able to.
Right.
Exactly. So Georgia must transition to nine, uh, Next Gen. Life safety and accuracy is the primary driver here. Uh, the ability to receive precise location correlates to faster dispatches and lives saved. There's also been a legislative mandate, uh, House Bill four twenty-three, which is a major step forward, mandating that all new nine-one-one systems meet the new, uh, Next Gen nine-one-one standard. And it shows the state's commitment to modernization, requiring all existing P S apps to align with this, uh, uh, direction. Georgia's one of the last states in the southeast to fully implement statewide Next Gen. All of our neighboring count, uh, states have done it. Florida.
Alabama?
Alabama has. Alabama, uh, Tennessee, South Carolina, North Carolina, Virginia, Florida is in the process of implementing it now. Georgia has not. So we, we've gotta get on, on the bandwagon here. Cybersecurity, um, the new ESI net again will be overseen by G I C A. Uh, will be enhanced with cybersecurity to protect the public safety in, infrastructure, which is much needed. Funding, nine-one-one, um, s- systems in Georgia are currently funded through our local surcharge. Um, I will say that our, uh, surcharges cover seventy percent, seventy-one percent of our current budget. So we're doing pretty good there. Um, the state has committed by creating a resolution to create a study committee on funding for Next Gen nine-one-one to help us move forward in the funding and matching, I don't wanna say matching, I don't know how much they're gonna give. But they're gonna, um, doing this study to see what it takes to build our infrastructure. We've gotta get that ESI net infrastructure built. Georgia P S apps, our role, actively coordinating with G I C A, continuing to, um, uh, work with them for the state's plan to connecting on the ESI net. Um, continue studying how to fund the network backbone. Uh, we will have to allocate resources to make sure we do comprehensive training for our telecommunications and I T, cause it'll be a whole new system here, um, and just to continue advocating. In summary, Next Gen is not a luxury. It's a vital necessary replacement for an outdated network. Uh, delivers better location accuracy, allows for multimedia communication, and increases the resiliency and interoperability of our P S app. And we just respectfully ask for your continued support like you've always done, uh, as we move forward to the twenty-first century.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now the word's on the street. Eat nine-one-one.
What it's gonna cost.
Approved contract with Buckley and Associates to begin construction design for the electors, election votes, retention building.
Mr. Chair, we have, uh, the board, you and the board have before you a contract, uh, A I E contract with Buckley and Associates to start the construction design. Uh, this body approved the site at the October meeting. Uh, this contract is for to move forward with the architect. Uh, he will work on an hourly basis until the budget is set. Um, afterwards, you'll notice in the contract, it sets forth a standard fee, which they pretty much charge us six, six percent of the project budget. Uh, we'll meet with Mister, um, we'll meet with Mister Brown tomorrow, who's worked with them very closely. And also we're scheduled to meet with the architect on next, um, Thursday to start the process with the budget. So tonight we asked the board to approve the contract with Buckley to move forward with the design. Um, this project is, uh, there are fun, there are funds to start this process in the current splosh. Um, this project is, uh, there are fun, there are funds to start this pressure process in the current splash.
Current splash, that's right.
Uh, we've been discussing that, you know, this is just a progress of it, so next step, uh, I I suggested we also create this flow chart kinda thing to keep us on track where we are. In in this process.
Ready for motion?
Ready for motion.
We approve the contract with Buckley and Associates to begin construction design for our election voter registration building. At the old. Health Department building site in Flemington.
Yes, yes ma'am. Very detailed.
Very detailed.
Look. Motion second, any further discussion?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor, show your hands, please. Motion carries, motion approves. We can move on with that. Uh, they'll they'll be, I'm surprised none of them are here tonight. Oh, they're busy.
I was just, just thinking, this has nothing to do with the, um, what we just voted on, but that. That location, that Patriots Trail coming out, the eighty-four people coming up trying to get to Heinzville.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I mean, you know, we do have that big sports complex back there. Um, and I know we just got a light at Publix and we just got a light at McLarice Curve. And, you know, from Dairy Queen to Patriots Trail is just a probably a stone throw, but it's, um. Not so much for the activity that takes place at the voter's registration office. But that baseball complex and that sports complex down there, that there's a lot of traffic. And I don't know if I need to say this out loud, but I may as well. I, um, I go through that apartment complex with the big flag.
Do you?
And and me and everybody else, because you you can't, I would, coming out, coming out and coming back in Heinzville, you you can't make a. A left with everything, even, you know, trying trying to get out of there, so.
You'd be happy to know, sir, that making that road, a official road is on T-splice. Yeah, so it'd be a official roadway between Schuman and Rec and the apartment complex.
Um, the one that I'm.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It's on the T-splice list. For that reason.
Yeah.
To help get traffic.
Because of the light.
Bring him to the light.
Okay.
Uh, renaming the Liberty County Parks and Recreation to Liberty County Parks, Recreation and Leisure Services.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, we have before you a letter from the, uh, advisory board of the Recreation Department. And they approved at their August twelfth meeting, um, to send forth, uh, this letter requesting the board commissioners change it from. The Recreation Department to the Liberty County Parks, Recreation and Leisure Service, uh, in recognition that they are expanding in terms of their service delivery. And and they would like to be recognized as such.
Mr. Mosley, you said they're expanding?
Terms of things that they're doing, programming and et cetera.
What are some of the things that they are doing?
Well, I'm glad you asked. You have a new pickleball courts and, uh.
I passed by the other day and nobody was out there.
It must was two in the morning.
And and Commissioner, they're exploring more things they can do for seniors.
Yeah, okay.
Well, Mr. Chairman, um.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I, the, it's the, um, the leisure part, this, uh, the leisure services, what what would that be? You say something for senior citizens, but such as. Different programs or something?
Yes, sir.
Like. Well, I guess a senior citizen could play baseball if he wanted to, but but what's the the additional expansion, um, in the leisure area? Cause I I guess the name is about the same except for the leisure portion. So what's, what the, what's under that heading? Do do you know anything right off the top?
Well, Commissioner, we have a a commissioner over here that's on the rec department board, and I would love for him to to chime in on that conversation.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Fraser, what's what's under the. What's under the leisure heading and all, and does this, does that leisure that they're talking about, does it have an I in it unlike this one?
What's going wrong, right? Right, it's supposed to have an I.
I didn't know if it was too kinda.
We're gonna find out.
Right, well, uh, I, uh, I I think. The board in its entirety, they're just looking for, uh, not just what they're providing to this community today. But, uh, what the future growth of Liberty County and and additional projects and. And programs that they're trying to, uh, bring to this community. From, like you said, from from nine months to to ninety-nine. So I think that's what they were, um, looking at for the most part. In 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 most, in most communities, even in Chatham County, that that's what they're basically called as well. I I think around the state, most people are getting away from just their recreation, cause I think people, whenever you think about recreation, you just think about. Uh, you know, the athletic sports for, you know, the kids between ages of four and fourteen. But I think this current board is looking, you know, for future growth from that perspective.
But and and I guess, um, under the leisure category, when I think about it, I think of, um, I think there's a sport called shuffle ball. And if and if that's one of them, under the leisure category, that would mean, um, a n- a facility or something like that. Or you could do that anywhere. I'm talking to Joe and he's writing.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry.
Well, no, I I I still don't know what what falls under the leisure heading.
Right.
If 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 anything.
I don't think we have anything down there.
Seriously?
And and if it is something under there, does that in, will we have to build another facility for the leisure portion of this, um? We got parks, we got recreation, and, um, you know, I'm still trying to just just figure what.
I I I, again, I think, um, the board is just looking at different options for for the future. And the future growth of Liberty County and and additional options. So, and I think from from their perspective, this is, you know, ground zero. This is the first portion of of changing the identity and and the grow.
To to answer your question, as the rec department services grow, there will be new, uh, buildings that would be anticipated.
That's what I figured, yeah. Okay, um, thanks, I I guess.
What's your pleasure is this, or we can have, we can certainly invite the LCRD director to come? If you're really interested.
That seems like a, excuse me, that seems like a lot of words to put on, like a logo or something on their hat or their cap or their uniform. I don't know. I know you said on their floor, you're the liaison to us, but. Yeah, and that's, that's what we do.
I I know, that's what we do. Like, 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 for example.
I just think about the.
And and I'm about to address that, like, even with most businesses, you know, it might be on their LLC. But then you still doing business as something else. You understand what I'm saying?
Right.
I I I think they have thought all that out already. And and most of our buildings don't even have Liberty County Recreation Department on it with the signage, but.
I know, but I've seen like T-shirts and caps that they wear.
Understood.
But anyway, whatever we need to. I don't know, but I I don't understand the leisure service.
It's, it's.
And it's long.
Let's just bring the director. Let's table it, put it in, and bring the director.
Okay.
All right, sounds good enough with me.
Well, we need this meeting sometime.
No, when you understand, you understand. When you don't, you don't.
I need to do things.
It 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 is, it's not costing us nothing, cause we don't have anything. Okay, never mind. Move, move it on. Cause this is a.
Be better prepared next time to explain that. Our, Jen, Marjonda? Marjonnata, Davis Alcohol License Application. Thank you for helping. Please see, I'm not the only one that. Uh, Mister.
Mr. Mr. Chair and members of the board, uh, you have before you application license from, uh, Ms. Davis. Uh, at the location of of fifty-one ninety-five Highway one ninety-six West Suite. Um, the application meet the requirements of the ordinance. But there are numerous concerns that, uh, staff have about this particular application. And I would like for them to be entered to the record their concerns.
Hello, hello, everybody. Good evening.
Good.
Um, we typically, our office, um, doesn't typically come up here for alcohol applications. Um, but we had to reach out for this one, um, because we have received numerous complaints on the property. Ms. Um, Ms. Davis originally was issued a business license to operate a teen nightclub at that location. Um, her hours of operation, I believe, were to be Friday and Saturday night from like seven to eleven. Um, Zonin did approve it to go there. I don't think the teen nightclub worked out. I don't think it was as profitable, profitable maybe as she thought it was gonna be. So she decided to turn it into an adult nightclub. She did come by our office. Um, we discussed the process for applying for alcohol application and business license. She submitted, um, both the alcohol license and the business license application. But she did not wait for her approval before she opened up the nightclub. So, um, we started getting some complaints from the neighbors. Um, there was already five. Um, nine-one-one calls sent out to that location for disturbances.
From neighbors?
From, well, the neighbors called, yes. Uh, this was going on four o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning, three, five o'clock in the morning, that these calls were coming into nine-one-one.
Uh, Nick, Mr. Chair, Ms. Nicky, these calls were how close together? Within the six months, three months?
No, this just happened recently.
Recently.
Oh, yes, um. We're talking ten-five, ten-eleven, ten-twelve, that timeframe.
First week of October.
Yeah.
Within two weeks in October. And then I started getting phone calls.
Right.
Is this in a neighborhood or quiet community or?
It's right off of one ninety-six West, um, going towards the Gum Branch area. It's Wells Road and one ninety-six is the intersection. It's like a little strip area. They had a liquor store there at one time. They had the Amazon bin store there at one time. It's been several different little businesses.
But there are, there are residents across the street and on both sides. And another business on the back side.
Correct.
Um, I'm just trying to pitch you where that is. Is it past the fire station, the, um?
Before.
Is it past the baseball field?
Oh, no. Before.
Right across from the gas station.
Right past road.
The Amazon place used to be, you don't remember?
The what now?
Amazon, a little place on the right-hand side.
Amazon, the delivery people?
Right across from the gas station.
Now, um.
Schuman's Gas Station.
Okay, okay.
You know, it's like right across from that.
It's across from that?
Yeah, kinda catty-cornered across from that.
So, um, Commissioner, you wanna speak to? It's in your district, you wanna speak to this, uh, so. Let me get, let me get my bearing. So because of the. And we'll get petition in just a second. So the alcohol, uh, the business was open before getting that license.
Correct.
And there had been discussion about the process necessary to acquire license.
Yes.
Okay, all right. And then on on top of that was the complaints from the neighbors or whomever, all right? Even, help me out with this. I'm not sure this is how, if we even dictate this. What determines the business operation hours? What determines, I mean, you said there were some five o'clock calls. What says that you gotta close at one o'clock, two o'clock? How's that?
I mean, we do have a noise ordinance.
Yeah.
Um, there was lots of noise complaints. Um, I mean, we don't, we can't really dictate that.
There's, yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, the calls that I was receiving from my constituents was noise, um, parking. And, uh, just. Some screaming. It just wasn't a good situation, waking waking those folks up that were sleeping. I just don't know that that type of business is a good fit for that community. It started off as a teen club or event center or something like that, and then it escalated into a, an adult. I think it was advertised they were open two to five AM. And those folks out there are sleep, sleeping, and then there's.
Yes.
Got chaotic there a time or two.
We were sent some video footage, um, of the place, and I had to share it with our fire marshal, our fire deputy.
Yeah.
The occupancy load was fifty. There was way more than fifty people in the videos. So they, they were even going over their occupancy load that they should have had.
All right.
Mr. Mosley, did you have something else?
Mr. Chair, you asked about hours. Um, I noticed, uh, in some jurisdictions, the alcohol license, um, ordinances do specify certain hours of operation. So that that you could serve, so that kinda controls people hours.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so I guess Liberty County's is twenty-four hours? No? No? I wouldn't think so.
All right. So this is coming before us for?
The approval of the alcohol license.
Okay.
All right, but Mr. Chair, I I guess the the question I have is, uh. So we normally don't go through this process.
For the alcohol license, every alcohol license comes to y'all for approval.
They vet it.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And they bring, they're saying that all the boxes have been checked.
Right.
Right, right.
But because of the extended circuit answers around this, and the like, and the business operated before getting the license.
Right.
I I mean, but. I I I, I I get that they might not have a alcohol license. But were they serving alcohol?
Yes.
Or were they giving it away, or was alcohol?
They were ser- they were serving it.
I mean. Okay, I'm I'm just saying because that's that's a little kinda, kinda.
The, um, for a business such as this, don't the, um, uh, law enforcement have to, um, approve it or something like that? So is is that, I'm I'm looking at this handout here, and, um, there's, uh. Something here from the sheriff department that's just. Doesn't, um. It don't, um, say what 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 they recommended on here. It just said, um. Criminal record attached, knows NCIC warrant, and there's someone's signature on here, um. But I I mean, I I would, you would think that it would be of some form or some, the recommendation from law enforcement would be, that that's not part of this.
It's in there.
In there?
It is. It is this page right here. Confidentiality report. We cannot disclose some of this information. But our ordinance is based on if you're a convicted felon or not. So the sheriff recommended approval based on our ordinance.
Right, which is, um, I mean, that's law enforcement and, um, the 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 calls and the 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 different, uh, episodes and instances that you mentioned. But this, uh, according to this, this, the sheriff office of approval.
Based on the history. Like, they don't, they don't go through calls or anything like that.
Right, well, I mean, um, they approved it based on whatever, but but it's 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 approved by law enforcement.
For criminal history check.
Huh?
For the criminal history check. That's all they check for.
Right, but again, this is, um, it's part of the packet and the sheriff approved it. Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Chairman, there are several of the neighbors here that, you know, I know this is no open session or whatever, but the ones closest to the, uh, establishment.
Let me hear from the petitioner first, and I'll, if you all will send a representative just a second, whoever was gonna speak. Um, Ms. Davis, would you please? You wanna come and speak to what we've been discussing, please, ma'am?
Yeah, excuse my attire. Didn't have time to get dressed. I came straight from the kitchen. Um, uh, I started this, a teen club. I came and went and got, um, my business license for my teen club. The teen club was very profitable for a few weeks, and then I just couldn't keep up with, you know, getting the teens to promote and certain things. I ended up going back to the business license office and said, hey, you know, one of my partners said, hey, why don't we just try to, um. um, you know, run it out to adults, because everyone keeps asking us about the venue. Can you, can we rent the building, can we rent the building? So I said, you know, why? We're paying rent, paying electric, paying water, paying all these bills and losing money on the building. Um, let's just go ahead and try to rent it out to make some money, um, while I get my business license, well, the new lis, the new license for the adult club. So, I haven't started running a nightclub. I, this may be the un, impression that they're under. If you look at our social media or anything, it's us allowing people to rent our space out to have parties, to have events. It hasn't been a Nivea's, us, the owners, doing events. I wouldn't even went through the process to get my license and pay seventeen hundred bucks and waste all these thousands of dollars for the, the, the building itself. The A.C. went out on me. I've been spending and ju, like, putting a lot of money out on the property. Um, and I haven't been able to, you know, recoup any of my fun, well, recoup any of the money back. So, she's saying that we started a nightclub. We did not start a nightclub. We have party promoters that's been coming to us saying, hey, can we use your, can we use your space? We'll pay you. We haven't been making a dime. We haven't been making money. They have rented our space out to, to do parties while we're, while we await for the liquor license. So I'm not undersure what, I mean, I'm not sure what Nikki's, um, saying is totally true, because we've been trying to, you know, stay on a safe, stay, stay, we're not trying to do anything to, to knock our, our liquor license out the park. That's, so that's why we said, hey, let these other promoters give the, the, the spot publicity. So when we do get approved, we are already ready to go to make that money back that we've been spinning. Um, she's saying about the complaints. Um, I haven't even seen any of these complaints. Everyone just keeps talking about them. Anytime that law enforcement has ever came to the property, they always came and said, hey, you know, we just riding through. One, one of the officers came and said, hey, uh, a nine-one-one call came through, but we just heard noise in the background. It wasn't a complaint. Then, um, one of the neighbors or some lady contacted the business number and said, hey, um, I, this is the, she, I don't, for one, I never did my research on that area. She told me that it was crack infested, and it was, cr, she, I don't know what, where her terminology was. She said it was a real bad area. Me, the whole time while we were getting the building together, I did see multiple police, multiple police officers sitting in the parking lot. And I did kinda think like, well, what's going on over here that I keep seeing officers? But I was just thinking that officers was patrolling the traffic. The lady called and said, hey, I heard some noise out there, and I thought it was smokers or something. And I said, what do you mean smokers? And she said, well, this is a crack infested methamphetamine, meth something, some type of drug area, and they, the smokers be out here, and that's what I thought it was, some smokers. And I said, no, ma'am, we have a business. We have a teen club. They, it were, you know, parties that were booked. And, um, she said, well, you should be able to close at a certain time, because I thought it was some smokers out there. And I said, ma'am, I'm not aware of what smokers or what methamphetamine or whatever the drugs you're talking about. I'm not sure. So, I said, we will try to keep the noise down. I apologize for disturbing you, but we do have a business license, and these parties are already booked. And she said, well, uh, something about Liberty wouldn't, uh, I mean, Gum Branch wouldn't allow that, and Liberty don't care. I said, ma'am, I'm, I'm not, I don't think that's the case here, but it's an event that was already booked. So, I'm sorry that we disturbed you, but I will tell my D.J., because some of the D.J.s, they do bring different speakers and extra amps. So it may have been a little noisy. I apologized to her, and I said, ma'am, I will make sure that my D.J. does not bring that extra amp or those extra speakers to disturb you or, you know. And when the business license office agreed to give me that teen club, they knew that it was gonna be noise. And they know that that area is zoned for a C-three. So, I'm just, we're two hundred feet away from the residential area to all the houses. So, when they agreed to give me that teen club, you knew it was gonna be noise. So I'm just not really sure what we're hitting around for. Is it my liquor license that you guys just don't wanna give me? Is it the noise? Is it the business? What is it? Because we're picking at a lot of things, and I'm not really sure. I think we're getting lost. Multiple officers has pulled up in the area. This is not my first business. I do run a strict, tight, uh, professional business. I do not try to break the law. I've been here for three years, uh, paying, uh, tax, taxpayer in Liberty County. Any business I ever did, I've always did it right. I haven't tried to cut corners or get over on anyone. I've paid every fee they asked me to pay. I've done everything I'm supposed to do.
Ms. Davis, I, I don't mean to cut you off, but do you own that strip mall?
No, I don't. I, I wanted, I'm leased, I'm leasing.
Out to another?
Yeah, we were just, we were just trying to get some more money back.
You're on the lease, I guess, from Mr. Webb or whomever owns it.
It's, it's Bert, Bert Webb.
Okay, so you're on that lease.
And we were.
With her, but then you rent it out to someone else.
No, we, they were doing team parties.
And then, are you there whenever they're having?
Um, I will accept their deposit, and I will just give them a breakdown of, you know, just the different things that we allow. You have to have security. It may be once, I may pop in, or I may have like one of my partners or my,
You know, two, two, two o'clock in the morning?
They have, I have a licensed security team that I have a contract with, that are licensed, and every time the police came there, they reassure them like, hey, everything is under control. There's no fighting going on. They're licensed. They have, you know, they're armed. And they always reassure that the, the officers that pulled up.
Five times in, in, you know,
Well, the five times, half of them were accidents. They claimed. That's what the officers pulled up and told us.
But there were nine-one-one calls complaining about that.
Can I see them?
I don't have them.
Be at the sheriff's department. Be at the sheriff's.
When I went to the sheriff's department, they referred me back to Nikki, and Nikki told me about the complaints, but her, or the sheriff have, department hasn't given me any complaints. It's just like hearsay. No one showed me.
Concern as the commissioner that represents those people out there of the time, of the morning that you're having those parties.
Okay, so if, if it's the time, are we just saying it's just the timing that we need to stop earlier?
Other issues, you know.
So, with a liquor license, when it comes to getting a liquor license, what is all the determinations? Because like he said, the, I mean, the sheriff approved it, right, for my liquor license? Cause it's like we're crossing a lot of different lines, and we're, I'm not, I'm getting lost.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this, have one question. The, the business was open as a, as a teen club.
Originally, yes.
Okay, and what, what were the hours of operation?
Oh, we had stopped around maybe twelve P.M.
I mean, but that, that's,
Because it was kids, and I, I know I wouldn't allow my t, my teenager to be out too late.
And, so, so you, you were, um, you operating a, a teen club, a licensed teen club?
Yes.
And, um, and I guess you, you gonna change?
We're trying to merge it, yes.
And go, and go in another direction?
Yes.
And until you get approved for that other direction, you, you, um, you're, um, circumventing that by allowing people to have parties.
Just try to make some of the money because the bills are still.
I, I can fully understand that. Uh, but, uh, Mr. Mosley, or Chairman, or anybody, maybe, um, Tony, um, if you have a business open for that, can you, can you use it for something else? Huh?
Not with alcohol.
But, but if, if, let's say if they wasn't selling alcohol, and she had a teen club, and someone said, hey, man, this is a nice building. We wanna have a party here this weekend. They, they could do that? Okay. Okay.
Can't hear you. Not always.
But the issue for the inspections department is violating the alcohol ordinance before you get an alcohol license.
Oh, that, you, you, you said the issue's getting lost. My, my question was, if you have a teen club and it's closed, and somebody say, hey, man, this is a nice building. My daughter wants to have a party. Can the people that, you know, that have the business for the teen club, use it for something else?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That wasn't the issue for the,
Uh, I'm not saying that was the issue. That was the question.
Oh, yes, sir.
That, that was my question.
But just to bring it back to the board, definitely, the, the, the teen club, the issue that could be somebody inspections department recommended denial is because the violation of the alcohol ordinance before there is a alcohol license.
Allegedly.
She just admitted that she rented it out to people, and they served alcohol, even though she, she said she didn't serve the alcohol.
She didn't serve.
Right, but.
Mr. Chair, the, there are extenuating circumstances that our, our county attorney did say it could be taken into consideration for this, this license. The issues with the parking, the issues with the noise, and the other issues. So, there are, those circumstances y'all can take into consideration.
Yeah, that, that portion of the building that she's rented is very small. Very small.
Ma'am, the parking.
And the parking.
The park, the park. It, it's a lot of parking. No, I'm not. I can't speak on any other business. I've, I've been renting the building. I'm actually in the building every day when I'm there, so I know.
Your car.
To be honest,
Maybe, I didn't even know it was opened until I got calls. I, I've never seen no one there, actually. But anyway, that's beside the point. We're getting way too.
Okay, okay, let me, can I speak? Can I speak? Can I?
Yeah, closing, closing statement that we hear from the,
Excuse me, sir. Let me introduce myself. My name is Anthony Kilgore. I'm, um, part business owner with her, and the teen club was definitely our main focus. I'm, um, I just got, I've been out of prison since two thousand sixteen. The teen club was my idea. I've, I've worked with Coach Hollis. I, I've worked with different, I've sat on the reentry board for, with Daisy Jones. When I first came home, I was on, on the reentry board, and this is, this is my passion. The only reason we switched it up to an event center, because, and as a matter of fact, my brother just passed away in April. We had a, we had a repass at the building. So, to say that you can't have something else in it, that's, that's, that's a discrepancy.
We've had more than just night. But I'm saying, we have day, we had day parties. It's a lady that just lost her son. She's doing a memorial there. It's a teen cl, it's, it's just an event space. Clearly, that's what we were pushing for. If the alcohol can't go through, then can we just do an event space? I mean, I understand. We didn't get any violations.
You were doing the events.
No one gave us a, no one gave us a violation. The officers did not come shut us down. Nikki just called me and told me shut it down, but I have not gotten any violations. So, I haven't been served. I haven't violated anything. I understand. When she said, hey, this can't happen, we shut it down. Where's, I, I haven't got any warnings. I haven't got any violations. I haven't gotten anything. So it's like to say that I'm already denied before I even, yeah.
And we, we, it, it is a teen club. We, we have programs set up right now with, uh, Wesley.
I'm not, I'm sorry. I have not seen a car one there. But anyway.
Do you go there every day?
Mr. Chairman, again.
But anyway.
I want, I wanna let him finish, then bring the,
Okay, alright.
Thank you for letting us talk. First of all, I'm not a lawyer. So I'm not very smart, but I know when I see things that are not right, and I see something that's not right, right across the road from my house. When me and my husband get anxiety, anxiety attacks come Friday and Saturday, because we know, stuff like that is gonna go on across the road from my house. And we get woke up at two fifteen. They usually start arrival, arriving at two oh nine in the morning, A.M. On Saturday morning and Sunday morning. And they party, the whole parking lot. I have a picture right here from the October twelfth, the parking lot. It is completely packed, full of cars, completely. You couldn't get another car in there. They had cars going down Wells Road and back out, cause there was no place in that parking lot to park.
Parked in front, also parked in front of the businesses and the business across the road at, at.
They parked right at the garage. These people who own, who lease this building, had, with the, for the garage, usually have one or two cars parked over here that they're working on or waiting to be worked on. These people were parked on the twelfth of October, Sunday morning, right up against this building. And the owners of the business told me the cars were even parked in the grass between the highway and the building. And they saw on their camera that these partiers were, had the trunk of their vehicle open, drinking out of the trunks of their vehicle, and throwing the trash on the garage's property. We had to, we had to put up with this. We have to put up with that. At two o'clock in the morning till five o'clock in the morning. We were, we were pleased this weekend. They were supposed to have a party on the first of November at two to five, but it didn't happen. Thank God it didn't happen. They didn't have a party at, for two weeks in October, the latter part of October. Thank God, we got some peace and quiet. We've seen things on my property across the street that I know ninety-nine percent came from the partiers. It didn't come from my trash. We've seen one Sunday, that when we first started hearing about the parties and watching them, the first Sunday, they had the party from two to five in the morning. The next morning, a, after five o'clock, after we started wandering around, that parking lot and across the road was full of garbage, pure garbage. And there were liquor bottles right up against the building. That's what they're having out there. We, we lived out there in Gum Branch all my life. I'm seventy years old. And we shouldn't have to put up with that kind of partying across the street from my house. We've also got a petition.
And a noise ordinance from Liberty County.
Ordinance.
Let, let me, let, if I might, just let me read a few little passages here.
We'll give you this petition.
Yeah, let me read this little piece right here. It's, uh, Liberty County Code's, uh, twenty-six dash fifty-one anti-noise regulations. If you look at section twenty-six dash fifty-two miscellaneous prohibitive noise, talks about radios, phonographs, loud noise, amplified, amplified sound with such volume, a particular, particularly during the hours of eleven P.M. and seven P.M. as to annoy, as disturb, uh, the quiet comfort and repose of persons in any office, hospital, or in any dwelling hot, hotel, or other type of residence, or any other person in the vicinity. And it goes on. No yelling, shouting, singing, whistling. It's, it's, it's yours. I mean, it's your, it's, it's your code here. And it goes on to also say, yelling, shouting, hooting, whistling, singing on the public streets, out in the, the businesses there, particularly between the hours of eleven P.M. and seven A.M. Folks, they do not start till two A.M.
If this was a teen club? If this is supposed to be a teen club, how many teens, how many mothers would let their teen children go to a party at two to five in the morning? How many? Across, across the street, I've seen the partiers park across the street at the gas station. Like I said, they park right up next to the garage, and one, I was told by the garage owners, they wandered right around the building like they own the place. We don't need that out in the city of Gum Branch.
Well, and also at that time, there's also police cars at that, that, that building that are being worked on.
Yep.
There are, are cars outside while these folks are pulling in and parking up there to party. Again, two A.M. to five A.M.
Thank y'all. You got it. Yes, sir.
I might tell you, sleep deprivation makes you crazy. It really does.
Thank you. I, I just have a, a few questions. So, I, I understand, I guess, Mr. Mosley. Oh, no, y'all fine. With the noise ordinance, and also whenever you were talking about the, uh, she's, you can rent out a facility, if you own a facility. You, you can, that's totally legal. Well, well, what I'm saying is, if she, if she leases a place.
That's not.
I, I, I'm, I'm trying to figure out what the issue is, cause we're going on. That they don't want it over there.
Alcohol license. She can continue to keep her teen club, event center.
So she is only licensed for a teen club. And it was only supposed to be from the hours of like seven to eleven in her business plan that she gave us. It is not an event center. It is not licensed for an event center. That would have to be a totally separate license.
It is not an event center, it is not licensed for an event center, that would have to be a totally separate license.
On, on the storefront, it says teen club.
Yes, and then, I also.
Without disrespect, I think I have a floor right now, thank you. But, she went through the, the. She went through the process to, uh, to get the alcohol license, because she was switching it over.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
And the sheriff went in normally the same protocol that we always go through, and it says to be issued. So, that part is checked. The issue is, I've heard noise, I've heard, uh, what else was it? Parking. We've heard numerous things. But, another question I have, do we have an ordinance where, you know, a, a particular bar in that particular area has it? What's, what's the time that they have to close?
So, the time is on, on Friday night, like going into Saturday morning, um, they would have to shut down at two forty-five A.M. And on Saturday night, they would have to shut down at eleven forty-five P.M.
And that's, that's the county?
That is section four dash twenty-two, hours of sale, um, for the consumption on premises.
On premise?
That is consumption on premise.
We, we, we need, eleven forty-five on a Saturday, on premise? Where, where in America do a bar close at eleven forty-five? At eleven forty-five? On a Saturday, where? I, I'm, I'm just asking, where?
But if that's what.
That's our ordinance.
I, 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 I hear that, but what I'm saying is, that's something that we probably need to look into. But that, that's, that's down the road, what, what I'm saying is now, and I'm just playing devil's advocate, you all are saying that she's been serving, but who's, who's saying that? Because I, I can tell you from ATF, if you don't have, it's weird, I'm telling you, if you don't have an alcohol license, people could bring alcohol in. But if you have an alcohol license, it's illegal, don't ask me how I know.
Ms. Chairman, you ready for a motion?
So, so, um, share with us again the, the, um, comments from the county attorney.
Y'all can take into consideration things such as parking, noise, and, uh, prior issues that have been out of whack, not being in proper order. Ask considerations and making a decision.
And, and that's, that's as a, uh, a teen club, not as, um, I mean, you, you said the, the noise, that's the noise generated from a teen club, the parking, that's parking for a teen club, or, I mean, you, you said, the attorney said that we could take that into consideration, we, we talking, it's a teen club o- o- on the record, right? That, that, that's what it is.
She is currently licensed for a teen club, but she has applied for a license for an, a nightclub, like an adult nightclub. So, she's changing her license from the teen club to the adult.
She's, um, applying to change the, the type of business?
Yes.
Or she, or she's just, um, requesting to sell alcohol at the business?
No, she's changing the type of business to an adult nightclub with the sales of alcohol.
Okay, well, this, this just says here on, uh, eight E, that, uh, alcohol license application.
Right. That's all we have to bring before you guys, is the alcohol application.
So, she will. For, for, for a teen club, is?
No, not for the teen club, like she's changing, she's shutting the teen club down and wants to open an adult nightclub.
Same location.
With alcohol sales.
And, and we're here to review, um, her applications for, for.
For the alcohol sales.
Okay. And all this other stuff came up, um, nothing, I mean, it's, it's not in this packet anything about, that, that's, that's not in there. What, what's in there is just the fact that she applied for alcohol license, and it looks like it got approved by law enforcement, and there's, there's not much else in here, but the other stuff is coming up, um, you know, in, in addition to that. Okay.
Right, and the sheriff department only does the background check part of it, that's all they do, they don't check anything else. Zoning has to do their check, they have to check the distance requirements, the sheriff only does the background, that's it. He doesn't run police reports, he doesn't go out to the site, he just has to check to make sure there's no convicted felonies.
But to, to sell alcohol there, to have a liquor license there, there's, um, the zoning, you just have to be so many feet from a church, from a school, or this and that and other. And also, does it, um, does, does that fit that criteria?
Yes, zoning did sign off on it.
Zone, zone, excuse me, zoning, they could sell alcohol there based on the, the zoning restrictions?
Yes, based on zoning, it's in the correct zoning to sell alcohol.
Okay, and, um, and, and I don't know if the county has that, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, Mr. Mosley. I, I know in, in Heinzville, parking, um, in the occupied building, you, you have to have, let's say if it's, um, and I'm just gonna throw this number out, let's say if the building is, um, according to fire marshal, for a hundred people, you have to have X, X amount of parking spaces.
Right.
Is that considered by zoning as well?
Zoning will have to, once we, I mean, it's, I guess, I don't know like what her plans are, if we didn't approve the alcohol, if she would still proceed with the adult nightclub part of it, you know what I'm saying? Like, she's gotta try to get the alcohol approved first, and then everything else has to fall into place. So, fire marshal has to do his check.
She, she's right there, I, I would like to think if she, if she get alcohol license, she's gonna proceed with the adult nightclub, unless she's gonna open up a liquor store.
Right.
Was there already a liquor store before I?
Okay.
Was there already a liquor store?
I, I guess a liquor store would have different parking, parking compartments.
It only stayed open maybe six or nine months.
Zoning cleared the parking, zoning already cleared the parking for the teen club.
For the teen club that, yeah.
Yeah, so the adults in the teen club is just a different, I mean, it's just a different.
It's just a different age group.
It's not really a different. Only already approved the parking lot, zoning already approved the liquor, the, the C-three, the commercial zoning, zoning approved everything. The only thing we're here for is the liquor.
Nikki, help me, help me with something, okay. Facts are here, it was for a teen club that they were licensed for, you know, but now they're, by her own statement, she decides not to do this, maybe it wasn't profitable, whatever reasons. Uh, the other young man said that his heart was into the teen club, but everything's went from the teen club to an alcohol license, and probably another type of business, which probably would justify the alcohol license if she did a different type of business license.
I did, she has it.
So.
She applied.
She has it.
But we will not issue this without having the approval.
Of the liquor.
For the liquor, because we can't issue a license for an adult nightclub to serve alcohol, because it's an adult nightclub with alcohol.
But where, where did the passion go, you know, that you had for such a teen club, you know? Just throwing this out there, but, it, uh, we went from one drastic measure, one, one nice measure to a drastic measure, so to speak.
Because the, the kids were asking us to stay open later, so I was saying, like, I didn't wanna really be getting into people's parents, and then, you know, I, I know nowadays kids start to sneak alcohol and do different things, and I just said, maybe this, this era is a little too much for me. When I grew up, I wasn't into all the things that these kids are into now, so I just kinda like said, hey, let's just transition and just deal with adults. We keep having adults reach out to us, asking us about parties, they keep asking us, hey, can we rent a space, the space is lovely, can we rent it, can we do this, can we do an open mic? Can we do a date party, can we do a baby shower, can we do a, a memorial? They're asking for multiple different things, so that's why I said, hey, maybe this is a way for us to increase sales if we had alcohol, because I didn't want it to be under the radar, so that's why I went through the process, I did everything, they, the liquor, I did everything that license and inspection asked me to do. Now, these complaints that I cannot, I, I, I can't prevent those, I mean, I can now that I know that they're here, but it should not affect my liquor license. I, my background has checked, I paid my fees, I paid everything, the, the sheriffs has signed off on everything, we're here about a couple of complaints, and I'm not saying that it's not important, because I don't wanna disturb the, the people, but as C-three with license signing off on it, they already checked the parking lot. Fire marshal already came out and cleared everything, we already, already checked all my boxes, so I don't want the noise complaint to just knock my, build my business out, just because, you get what I'm saying, I will keep the noise down, and we can sit up here and come to some type of agreement that, hey, we need to close a little earlier, but to, to, to try to knock my liquor license, my background has cleared, my fingerprint has cleared. Everything, I've checked every box, I've done everything I'm supposed to do, I paid my fees, I paid my fines, so.
But at, at some point, in, in this whole process, with the pictures I've seen, people are parking on private property and stuff also, and that's causing a problem.
There, Bert Webb, the one that leases the building, that whole plaza and that whole area is hers, she already had approved, we have permission from the owner of that, all that land they're parking on is from the owner, she owns that whole entire thing, she's trying to sell it to me.
You have permission?
Yes, I have permission.
Not far across the street.
We just, we just went through similar, this happened a while back.
Not far across the street.
We're two hundred feet away from, we're two hundred feet. I'm trying to figure out how they can even see, because we're two hundred feet up it right now, alright.
Alright.
If, if the main, alright. The main issue we're having.
I know exactly what it is.
Is. We've been having, okay. My grandparents are over seven years old, they live right next door, that's not the issue, the issue is the noise. The issue is the parking, it has gotten to the point where they have had to, if you drive by the property, so their business right here, my grandparents' place is right here. If you drive by, you will see they have had to put postage all along the road, because we have had multiple issues of people parking on private property. That property is paid by their tax, by their money, the property taxes paid by them, it's not public domain. We've had issues like this in the past with people coming down the property, and honestly, the way this merges into the liquor license deal, the way we see it, and many other people in our community with this side petition, is that we believe that alcohol sales and consumption in this place, in this very quiet, mostly residential area, will only cause these problems to become a further issue, and that is why the noise complaint has been brought up, and that is why the parking has been brought up.
And they, and they should.
I do have, it was a petition right here.
Thank you. Thank you.
It is signed by residents of Gum Branch, as a corporate liberty company.
We, we, we. We, we were not contemplating entertaining a public hearing.
That's right.
We have to really go into public hearing, but we want to hear from everybody, so, so, bringing it back, as you say, so, your presentation, your request is to deny the alcohol license.
Yes.
She, she is good with her business license for her teen center?
Yes, she is licensed for a teen center.
And your reason again for recommending disapproval alcohol license are, are reasons, given, once again, just be clear.
Well, we didn't meet our occupancy load, we had too many people out there, and then we started with the complaints. I mean, that's all we have to go on, we opened an event center, because that's what she wants to call it, we opened an event center without a license.
Alright, um, Commissioners, that's what we have to, uh, decide on, but the, the request here tonight, even though we heard a lot of other stuff, is to deny the alcohol license. Now, she, you have an application in hand for her to, uh, operate a.
She has applied for an adult nightclub with alcohol.
Yeah.
This is the business license application.
Okay. That's what we're looking at tonight? Yeah, I'm trying to make sure. Is that what we're looking at tonight?
The alcohol license.
What, what, I mean, you said.
Once you approve the alcohol license, then we can approve the business license. But we can't issue a business license for an adult nightclub with alcohol, without the alcohol license approval.
And then, and then it still has to go to the state, by the way.
Has to go to the state?
Yes, we forward our license to the state for their approval.
Right. Okay, so it'll take her a little while, okay.
I thought you were clearing it up for me, but I, I, I'm, I'm not so sure that you did, um, no, no fault of your own. One more time, the application that you have, that's, that's new, that she has, that's.
Yes, she is already licensed for a teen nightclub.
It's good to go, she can.
Yes, she can have her teen nightclub to operate between the hours of, I'm pretty sure it was seven to eleven, Friday and Saturday.
Okay, 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 but this is something, this is a transition from one.
Yes.
To the other with alcohol. And you say, the, can, all, all the concerns that we listen to, and parking's one of them.
Yes.
So, so, so that application you have in hand, would it, would it pass the parking smell test?
Um, Mr. Ricketson would have to answer that question, that's a zoning question, I think it's so many parking spaces per square footage of a building? Is how it would be calculated?
Ms. Chair, I think.
The event center is new to me, I, I, I'm familiar with that, because I'm presenting one of those to Heinzville tomorrow, and y'all have the same ordinance that they do. An event center requires two hundred square feet, uh, let's see, a, a parking space for every two hundred square feet, so, I, I looked it up on the property record, this building, I don't know if you have all the building or just a part of the building. One, one of it, it's like a fourth of it.
Mm-hmm, the suite A.
The building is five thousand square feet, so you got about.
And it's no, it's no other tenants, and it's no other tenants in that, that, that shopping plaza, and so Bert Webb said that we are able to use that, the behind the building, and all that's her property, she's already given us permission to use all of that. When I first bought my, my first application for the teen club, it would have been the same ordinance for the teen club, it's only adults, so I think we're getting lost with this parking thing. The parking is still, if it was a hundred teens in a building, it would be a hundred cars, if it's a hundred adults in a building, it would be a hundred cars. Zoning already had approved that, that parking lot for everything, so I'm just, we're, I don't know.
We, we approved a parking lot for a teen club.
Correct.
Now, now I'm hearing it was an event center, that's what it's being used for, because that's what the, that's what generated the complaints. An event center, if we, if we evaluated that, you'd have to have one space for every two hundred square feet, that building is five thousand square feet, so you'd need about twenty-five parking spaces, I, I haven't had a chance to look and see how many spaces or, or marked spaces are there. If we hadn't, if, if we delayed this another couple of weeks, I could probably give you a more professional evaluation, but I'm, I'm thinking on my feet right now.
They're not more.
I understand.
And we're not here for an event center, like she did not apply for an event center.
So, if we go to the.
It's only an adult nightclub.
Nightclub, would that, you would have to look that up for parking?
I need to look that up, I don't have that book here, but there is a formula that tells you how much, how much parking you need for an adult nightclub.
Because she's only renting suite A, and then, you know.
That would be, that would only be a fourth of it, so I'm guessing that's about thirteen hundred square feet, uh, the parking would be based on that.
And it has to be, like, parking with striping?
Strip parking.
And just not park anywhere, everywhere?
Right, with handicap, uh.
Handicap, I think she's got those down there.
Well, and, and I guess, uh, and, you know, we could, um, after this, we don't have to talk about parking, but if the owner, Ms. Webb, I think, what Ms. Davis said, if she gave them, um, permission to use whatever is there, then, um, even though the ordinance may say, you know, X for, you know, this for that, then they could request a variance, um, for parking with the letter or the approval from the owner. I mean, what, that, that would be something that we would have to vote on separate, but, but according to the ordinance, it's, it's so many spaces per square feet, of, of, according to the type of business, and if they didn't meet that, they could come and request a variance, and have, uh, the letter from Ms. Webb supporting that, that it's okay to do that after hours, or, or, or whatever. But, again, that's, that's, that's different. Okay. Commissioners, yes, sir?
I got one question. We've had issues going on like, not like this, but when we come up, we've heard it before, when somebody come up for zoning, and we go through everything, and we come up right on the end, say it's just for zoning. Am I right? This is just for the alcohol license only, right? What comes after them, whichever way it goes, it goes, right? Alright?
Yeah, and, and, and one other thing, I, I think Ms. Davis also said that these, the, the complaints, and I, I think you've got nine-one-one calls or police reports. and I, I think you've got nine-one-one calls or police reports that, um, and, and I don't know where they go, but, um, this is the first she said that she's heard of them. I mean, no, no, no policeman that was called to go out to this location for noise, um, like the next day, you know, witnessing, hey, Ms. Davis, we got this from your, from your, um, business. No, no one has made her aware of any of this. I, I think she said that she just heard about it tonight in, in, in some cases. But, but it's, I mean, it's a documented call. It's a nine-one-one call for that location, but...
Yes, and she can, um, she's more than welcome to fill out a open records online.
I'm, I'm not saying that, um, that it didn't happen.
Right.
Because it did happen, I'm saying that this is the first that she's been made aware that at her place of business, this kind of activity is, um, is taking place.
Right. I mean, I don't know what the deputies do when they go out there. I mean, it's in the call, the call log.
Right, but, but I would think if, um, if, like, if I had a dog in my yard that what, that was doing something, when, when, um, somebody complained that when they come, they're gonna ki- kinda knock on my door and say, hey, look here, this is, we, we, we responding to this call. She didn't get anything like that, just saying that, um, that people were parked outside the road. She didn't get anything to say that, uh, that there was a lot of noise or that people were doing all kind of stuff at two or five o'clock in the morning. She hadn't been made aware of that until tonight, at least that's what she just said.
Right, and maybe if she wasn't on scene, um, I, I don't know. I mean, they, they show on here that they talked to somebody.
It would be that five o'clock in the morning, but, uh...
Right.
I mean, uh, I think a follow-up by law enforcement would have, um, said, well, you know, we need to go to business license and find out who owns this place and, and go to them doing regular business hours or, or something, but, I mean, she found this out at a, at a commission meeting that the business that she's been licensed to operate has caused it all this havoc throughout that community, and she's just finding it out. She's unaware of any of that, or at least that's what she, that's what I understood her saying.
Chair, chairman, I do have the parking requirement. I just looked at that while everybody was talking. Uh, it's, it's one space for every three persons. I think you said there were fifty occupants, it was ready for fifty occupants?
I think, yeah, their occupancy load is fifty.
So that would be eighteen parking spaces. I, I think they probably have that, so the parking is not gonna be...
They're not striped out, but she probably could get that down.
That could be required.
Alright.
Commissioner, your district?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna, uh, make a motion that we deny the request for the adult, for the alcohol license because of those folks that are living in and around that area and the parking across Highway one ninety-six, which is a very dangerous, that is a dangerous intersection to start off with, with the accidents. Very dangerous intersection. And she can continue with what she's doing currently.
Okay.
With the teen club.
Is that second to the motion? No, then the...
You can second.
Yes, sir?
I'll second it.
You second it? Alright, I was about to say, alright, any further discussion? I mean, we had a lot to...
Well, uh, uh, again, Mr. Chairman, so we, we, the motion is to deny the license, um, for, for the new business.
Alcohol. Yes, so that would be the al- alcohol.
Okay, so it's the new business that's wanting the alcohol license?
Mm-hmm.
And, um, and I think, um, it was said that they can't get the license, um...
For the new business, without us approving this?
Well, yeah, but they can't get the license for the new business without us approving the application for the alcohol?
Uh, that's, that's, that's questionable, in, in my opinion.
That, 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 that's, so if we approve the alcohol, then they could get a license to open up a club?
If they passed all the other steps, yes.
But, but if they, if, let's say if they wanna open up a cl- not, and no one is gonna open up a club and not sell...
Without alcohol.
Without selling alcohol, but if they did, then, then, then they good. And then they could come back later on and say, hey, I, I wanna sell alcohol.
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And that's the cart way before the horse. But, but, but they could do that.
Right.
They, they, they could request to change the, the type of business to a nightclub.
Mm-hmm, I'm sure they could.
And then they open up.
And you say, yeah, they...
And then next month sometime, they say, oh, man, this is a good idea, let's, let's sell alcohol. And then they apply for alcohol.
That's what she did. That's what she did.
Yeah.
That's state law.
That's state law.
Who do we have in Atlanta, uh, making laws like that?
And, and again, for everyone, even if she opens it up, it's not illegal to have alcohol being brought in unless you have a liquor license. If you have a liquor license, it's illegal for people to bring alcohol in. But if you don't have one, they could still bring alcohol in. And again, that's state law.
Alright. All in favor of the mo- is that, that's all the discussion? Sorry. You good, sir?
Alright, I've been good.
Good, alright. Alright, all in favor of the motion that's presented, let me show your hands, please. Opposition? Two?
Three.
Three? Okay, alright. So, the motion is, the motion fails.
It, it, it's basically no action because there was no, neither positive nor affirmative. I mean, affirmative nor negative, so basically it's a no action vote.
But we can make a motion. I guess it won't make a difference, but we can still make a motion for approval. And I make a motion for approval.
Alright, so, somebody gonna second it?
But, Ms. Chairman, the, the reason that I, that I voted against it, I, I just don't see, I mean, you know, we have a packet here with, um, with all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, and we, the motion was to, uh, not approve it, but the paperwork is, is, is in order. You know, so I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay. Motion and second, uh, to approve the alcohol application?
That's based on the application, that everything is, um, is, is where it needs to be.
Alright, any further discussion other than what I've heard? Okay. All in favor of that motion, raise your hands. All opposed, raise your hands.
Boy. So where do we go from here?
Where's edit when you need it, Mike?
I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
Uh...
No action, alright.
I, we, yeah.
Bring it back up.
Yeah, the, yeah, I remember that happening once before, a long time ago. I forgot what the issue was, but, but, um, check with Kelly.
Yes, sir.
If you will. Um, where's Ms. Davis? Um, as, as you very well saw, it's like a tie draw. Uh, so right now, you can't take any further action. You, you have a teen center, uh, so you have alcohol license.
I know that she said that even though it's just a teen center, am I still allowed to rent the, the venue out? Because she, they did say that it is the last, now, they both just said that I am allowed. Nikki told me that I cannot do anything outside of that. I have a lady that's having a memorial for her son that passed away during incarceration, and she's having an event at my space. I already agreed and took her money, and then I also have an eighteenth birthday. I have a couple of events already lined up that's just being rented for the venue that has nothing to do with alcohol.
Mm-hmm.
So I, that's all I came up here for. That's all I came up here for, was alcohol. And I understand that, you know, all these, these other factors just fell into my application, which is not fair because all you guys were supposed to do was agree on the alcohol. It wasn't supposed to be the distraction and the, the term.
Now, Ms., Ms. Davis, you're not allowed to tell us what we...
No, I understand, but, but, but I understand my application, my background. I've done everything I'm supposed to. I paid my seventeen hundred. I've been spending money and money. I've been losing money because I had to stop business because Nikki told me that I can't have any other events outside of the teen. But am I allowed, like they said, I am able to have other events to, me, you know, use my space for events, right? Or no?
We can rent our building.
Yeah. But you, if you're talking about teen events...
I'm not having any alcohol involved.
Okay.
What does it say, maybe?
We have only licensed them for a teen nightclub, not an event center. That would be a totally separate license that they would have to apply for. And then it would have to go through zoning, and zoning would have to approve it. It would have to go through our fire department. They would have to approve it as an event center. We have only licensed it for a teen nightclub to operate between the hours of eight a, eight P.M. and eleven P.M. on Fridays and Saturdays. Nothing else.
Alright, that's it, Ms. Davis, until you reapply.
Right, and, and they, and they, they can't...
Okay, so I tried to apply for, if I apply for, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out because when I went up there to just do an event center, I, I'm just trying to figure out, I was beginning the liquor license confused with the nightclub. If I go back and apply for an event center, do I have to wait two or three months just to get approved for the event center?
How long is your process?
Because event center is almost, it's just, we're changing the age difference.
Yeah, but it's more...
My, my process is at the counter. It'll probably take about fifteen minutes. But I don't know how long the fire takes or the other process of, of that, but the zoning is pretty quick.
Okay, so it shouldn't be a long time. But can I, can I?
We didn't come back with my liquor because I did my background checks.
Once you get the application, then they'll bring, they'll bring it back. Uh, let me, let me say this to you, I'm, and I'm just meeting you for the first time. Uh, uh, and, and I, we always applaud people who are entrepreneurs who go into business. We do, and we, and we like that. But you, you have to take ear to what these people are saying who live in that neighborhood. There's no way you can totally ignore that.
I'm not trying to, that's why I thought we could come up with an agreement to say, hey, um, we're approving a liquor license. You guys need to close by three A.M. like any other establishment, but to just knock me out, I've waited two or three months for this, and I've spent out thousands of dollars.
And Mr. Rickenson's right, there is another...
Hundred yards away from what zoning told me to be, right? I am two hundred yards away from every residential, two hundred feet away from every residential. That's why the license...
Yeah, we, alright, we go. Alright, we got it, we got it.
But, uh, Ms. Chairman, regardless of what kind of business she had, there, we, we have ordinances that deals with what I would refer to as bad actions. Even if it's a teen center that, that's legally licensed to operate, and if you have some...
That's kinda where I was headed.
If you have some teens going there doing something against that, then there's, there's ordinances. If the teens were going there between, between those hours and blasting the music, there's a noise ordinance, okay? If the teens were going there and, and they were parking all up and down the road and, and, and causing litter, throwing, uh, burgon cane bags out. I'm not gonna say alcohol, burgon cane bags, but creating anything against the ordinance, there are ordinances and enforcement measures to take care of that.
Yes.
And it'd be the same for, uh, a nightclub, be the same for an event center, same for, for, for every, every kind of business. We have ordinances that, um, that, that, that govern that.
We do.
Okay, and, and, and also, Ms. Chair, uh, it, it was stated that if we deny that, then they will deny the event center? Oh, is she going?
Nikki's right there.
Oh, hey.
No, she, she just has to apply for it.
So what, but I thought she applied for...
No, she, she's only applied for an adult nightclub with alcohol. She's already licensed for the teen center.
So in other words, she could come there tomorrow?
She can come to my office tomorrow, and I will give her another business license application, and she'll fill it out, and then she'll take it to zoning, zoning will sign off on it, fire will sign off on it.
Listen, I'm, I'm, I'm just, never mind.
She has to just go through the whole process.
It's, it's fine, thank you.
Simplify it, yes.
Right.
I just take one...
No, no.
I'm, I'm applying for the...
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
I, I, I've been more than gracious to allow all this public, it's really more than beyond what we normally do. So, so I hope this group would appreciate what's happening here tonight, and not thinking, you know, these people are being mean and nasty, but we have...
By no means.
We have, we would not have generally allowed this much back into, that's just totally out of, out of decorum for, for this kind of commission, you know?
And I'm all for you trying to help out the teen club, like the gentleman said, trying to get the youth involved.
Alright, uh, oh, we got some stuff up. Don't, 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 don't. Okay, uh, vote for Ms.?
Uh, yes, sir. Ms. Chairman, we have, um, appointments for the...
Thank you, uh, asking and zoning.
Some of our best employees in Liberty County presented tonight.
We appreciate y'all.
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
Liberty County Development Authority?
Yes, sir, we had one application. Ms. Melissa Ray would like to be reappointed.
Uh, second.
Hey, no, that's not the motion.
I, I know, that's what...
He motioned.
I, I'm, I'm making the motion, okay.
Motion and second, Ms. Melissa Ray. We got that, y'all? Commissioner Blunt, okay, alright. Any further discussion? All in favor of Ms. Melissa Ray to be reappointed to Liberty County Development Authority, please raise your hands. I can vouch for her, she has done a great job.
Yes, sir. Next item we have is for the hospital board appointment, and, uh, we have two positions available there, and we only had one apply for each position. Remember, we have to send them three names, and, and then they, uh, make the recommenda- uh, make the vote on it. But our recommendation for the first position would be to reappoint Kimberly Ryan to hospital board.
Second.
Motion second, we reappoint Ms. Kim Ryan. Any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please. I will send that name forward. I'm sorry, y'all. Yes, he did.
Ms. Chairman, the next one would be we, uh, recommend Ms. Stephanie Osteen.
Is there a motion to that, Fred?
Some movement, Chair.
Second.
Motion and a second, we reappoint Ms. Stephanie Osteen also as a name to be submitted to hospital authority. Any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please. From what I'm told, she served well also.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Now, always, uh, you know, we always have to kinda get bailed out on this thing, so we, two positions, we only had two names.
Right.
Yes, sir.
So we have to send...
One over here and one over here.
Yes, you kinda do. Ms., y'all, you good on that, sir? Okay, alright, alright. Administrative report?
Mr. Chair, three things.
He's smiling, that's a good thing.
Number one, uh, you have before you, uh, some seal bids that we received. Uh, I miswrote them, and it had to do with playground equipment, so what I would love for you guys to do tonight is reject it, and I can send notifications back to, to these individuals, and this is for the playground equipment at Jones Park. I need to sell the equipment, not just remove it, and, and I wrote it up incorrectly. So I just need to, so I need y'all to reject this.
Would, would they, would, would they, um, the, but the bids stand, right?
We're gonna reject the bids.
And rebid.
And, and, and redo it. Redo it.
Yeah.
Well, the people that bid, would they see this? I mean, like, the guy that bid a hundred and fifty dollars?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna send a letter, and I'm gonna put this in there.
He, he at least heard it.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, I, I mean...
So, so that's what I'm gonna do.
Because he'll be notified.
He'll be notified?
Yes, sir.
But, I mean, but he, he kinda know what the...
I promise you, I thought the same thing.
Okay?
Oh, man. Second, right? We got a motion?
I made the motion.
Second.
Reject.
And, and, and Commissioner Gill has me thinking, so... Well, everybody get to see, so it's fair, everybody can go up the second time and, yeah, okay, alright, I'm better.
But, but you, you said that the...
I'm better now.
The bid, the bid is for, for removal and, and whatnot?
It's actually for the purchase and removal. We, I wrote it up for just the removal.
Yeah.
So that was sort of error on my part.
And error, yeah.
So, so I need to put it as purchase, because I want them to buy it and then remove it. I don't want them just to remove it.
I was ready to vote on number four.
Oh, that was, that, that was real soon.
All in favor? You could go all in for that, and that's, that's our man.
Hey, listen, and I wanted to be out there to see him do it.
The second thing, Ms. Chair, is, uh, something that Commissioner, uh, Gill brought up, and that was to assist, uh, the city of Heinzville for the removal of some of their debris over at the Heinz Hall Center. And so, uh, I talked with, uh, Mr. Ryan Arnold, who's handling this project. I talked to him that day, and he will submit a formal bid to, um, to the board, to the city council in terms of getting the project moving forward, and also talked to, uh, Commissioner Gill, who also brought it up, so I'd like to defer to Commissioner Gill for details of this project.
In, in our work session last week, we, we, we talked about that, uh, the bids came in and, um, you know, they, they were, um, the cost was a little higher than, than what we had allocated, but we had talked that we were gonna, um, try to do some in-kind work to remove some of that from that, from that cost, to supplement it in a way. Uh, as a matter of fact, there's a, a mobile classroom over there, old double-wide trailer, and, uh, the public works department is gonna tear that down and haul it, the debris to the transfer station, and we'll keep the, um, the tipping fee tickets separate. But, but, uh, I think we talked about waiving the fee for the tipping fee as part of this project. That's what we talked about last week. And we gonna start that, uh, Georgia Power went by there today and verified that there's no, um, power connected. So my guys are gonna tear it down by the end of the week, haul it off. We keep the tickets separate. I'll get them to Mr. Mosley so that we could, um, that'd be the part of the, um, the in-kind work that, that, that we'll be providing to that project. And, and then we also talked about when the big demolition starts... And, and then we also talked about when the big demolition starts, that, um, Clinton was gonna get involved and do something similar. Put a construction trailer there and, and do the same thing, to waive the fees for, for that. It, it may not be as, a whole lot of material, I know asbestos has to be handled separate, but any debris that comes from the, um, the construct, uh, uh, the renovation that Clinton was gonna haul that, cause he have these commercial dumpsters...
That's correct.
And he was gonna handle that, and we keep the tickets separate for that as well. And all of that pile up into the, the fee for that, I mean, the total, for the in-kind services that both the city and the county, um, provided.
And if I'm not mistaken, that could work in our favor sometimes, Ms. Hunter, for, um, grant applications that you have some skin in the game, as we call it, um...
Yeah, well, you know, that, that's happening now because, um, the, the public works department through the city, we, we cut the grass. We, we, and, and we, we got a record of how many times we cut it, and the cost associated, shows, associated with that, from talking to, um, Mr. Howard and the mayor and council, um, we, we've got that documented, so that, that cost is, would go toward the grants as well.
Alright.
But we, we gonna do that, uh, hopefully, we'd be finished with that double-wide trailer by Friday, um...
And, and I, I was reminded that we have done something like this, uh, previously, um, I just forgot what the project was.
It, I understood from Mr. Brown that y'all had waived tipping fees when y'all were doing some of the cleanups in certain part of the community, uh, years ago.
We did, District Four. Yeah, okay. Alright, Ms. Ms. Chair, I, I just have, uh, one quick thing, uh, for, for you and the, and the rest of the board. Uh, again, tonight's election night, you know, every now and then, we, it's election night, and we have a board meeting that coexists. Uh, in the future, is there any way possible we could look at, at least, for election night, tonight, meet? Up to us.
Yes, sir.
I mean, you know, I, I remember last year, you know, uh, we had a county commissioner, it was election day, and, and he came. But, and e- even just to show respect and, uh, to the other municipalities, you know? There's a couple elections going on. It's at our discretion, we can do that, we just gotta be aware of those pending days, oh, you're itching, aren't you, my friend? You have, you have a presentation, sir?
I have one more report, uh, Mr.?
Mr. Stanley, would you...
Hold on.
Oh, oh.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mosley?
Yes, sir.
Is your mic on?
I got it.
I cut it.
Don't worry, I can.
Boom, I cut it off, I didn't wanna hear you breathing. Mr. Chair, Mr. Mosley, we need to schedule a meeting with some of our friends of Sunbury. Uh, Chairman is well aware of it. Me, you, Trent, Clinton, uh, about two more from, uh, three more from Sunbury to discuss the issue with the, the flooding down there.
Yes, sir.
So we need to schedule that meeting as soon as possible.
Okay.
We can do it up here.
Okay.
There has been, uh, kind of related, we talked about earlier, some, an area that floods, and we just need to sit around the table and talk about it, rather than doing it in splendid fashion, uh, and explain to those folk how our county operates, you know, how drainage operates, and what we have, uh, in motion to improve drainage, so everybody will be on the same, same sheet of music. Right. You, you know, email here, text, that's not it, let's just sit around the table and openly discuss it, and then we'll leave there, knowing what direction we, we're making for that.
Okay.
And for them to be educated on just what the cap- and things the county can't do on personal property.
Right. Yes, I got it, everybody, alright. Mr. Chair, members of the board, um, we were just sent our election results, and Mr. Stanley? If you don't mind?
Uh, it's too late, I mean, with technology.
So, Mr. Chairman, uh, we did, uh, the voters of Liberty County did approve, uh, T. Floss?
Get to the good stuff, get to the good stuff.
And Floss!
Let me see the number, let me see the numbers.
Go back there, yeah, T. Floss.
T. Floss about sixty percent, almost sixty-one percent, yay!
And, uh...
Yeah.
So they, they...
Floss about, almost seventy, yeah, shit, yeah. The, the mayor elections for the cities?
Okay, it's the unofficial results, but they, they'll certify everything in the morning. It's pretty close. They'll, they'll certify it in the morning.
Back to the mayor elections, please, sir?
Uh, mayor elections, please, Mr. Stanley? I believe in the great city of Midway that our new mayor is...
Well, Flemington showing up first.
Oh, wow.
Mayor Ball, Mayor Lake Baller, congratulations to him. Man, you're moving that real quick. They do the top, how many vote getters, that's what they do?
Four. Four.
Four, Flemington, okay. Boy, that's Midway.
So, so Midway, I'm gonna look like a runoff.
Will he get reelected?
So, so what's your, what's your charter say?
No, it's...
No, it's the top four vote getters.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
They're at large.
Okay, so...
The same applies to Flemington? Do we know, does it?
Oh, there, hey! Oh, that's right! Council!
How about the mayor's seat?
So they're all council people now.
Yeah, they're all new. Now, the city of Midway, would they, would they have a...
The top four vote...
That's what she said.
I'm sorry?
It's top four vote getters.
What about the mayor's race in Midway? Runoff.
Man, Clint think, man, we could read real quick.
I know.
That's you, that's you scrolling it, isn't it?
Yeah.
Look how close they all are, everybody's got thirty-seven percent.
Y'all keep talking, y'all keep going.
I know. There's a lot of names on Midway.
So Midway will have a, a runoff for the mayor.
Boy, almost neck and neck. Thirty-four point four, thirty-four point eight.
That was close.
I know, I'm trying to...
Boy, they had a lot down there.
Right, that's good. And so the city council Midway, the, the top?
Top four.
Four, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Wish they would put him in, um...
Like Clementine.
Help me out, Leah, who's there?
Vernon Donovan, Annie Foskey, um, Janet Jones, and Robert Thomas.
Okay.
Okay, ah, oh, okay. Alright, okay.
They're all, they're all one, Flemington all one.
Donovan got, um, ten point two, three.
Ten point one? Alright, every vote counts.
Mr. Chair?
One.
Mr. Mosley?
Yes, sir.
To Ms. Leah? And the team? Thank you all for your hard work.
Mr. Camera was out putting, helping us out today.
Today, last night, actually, yeah, and today, yeah.
So as y'all get ready to adjourn, Mr. Chairman, uh, we have some members, we have some folk who have been involved in the election, and, uh, they would like to have a little eating, uh, and celebrate with us tonight, so, um...
If, if you may, and I, I, I would, I apologize, um, let, let the record show that we had in our presence tonight the mayor of the fine city of Gumbrach, Ms. Tina Eason. She's had through a whole meeting, brother, huh?
Mayor protesting.
Mayor of Gumbrach?
City clerk from the city, um...
Midway, yeah. Good to have you all, alright, that's all put in good order?
That's it.
Chairman, the motion of the weekend, adjourn and celebrate.
No move.
Second? Second, all in favor, alright.